Line, we'll get going in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five. Aloha, Pumianakako, the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three Neighborhood Board Number Thirty-four meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale Community Forum. My name is Anthony McCona Paris and I serve as the Chair Pro Tem. We are holding a hybrid meeting and have community members online via WebEx and in person at Kapole Hale Conference Rooms A and B. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand if online or your actual hand in person and wait for the presiding officer to recognize you before speaking. Please introduce yourself and only address your comments to the Chair. If I missed any hands in person, please get the attention of our Neighborhood Board Assistant Logan Hutchison and Logan will make sure to get my attention and let me know. Speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. Those giving reports may take ten minutes. Presentation materials must be provided and distributed online prior to sharing at the Neighborhood Board Meeting in our cloud drive and please remember to silence any electronic devices and keep yourself muted when not talking on WebEx or in person. This is our community forum, so everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. And let's honor each other by keeping to the allotted times for speaking and collectively finish our hana this evening in this forum in a timely manner. Are there any questions? Any questions in person, Logan?
Nothing on sight.
Awesome. So with that, I'll ask our Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant to do roll call of the board members, please.
Bosler?
Here.
Dudley?
Here.
Herrera? Tahela? Khan?
Here.
Livstone?
Hi.
Singleton? Tala? Harris?
Hail, present.
We do have quorum at this point, Chair, with five out of nine members present.
Thank you so much. At this time, we do have the main board business for this evening, which is the election of officers. And I would like to turn this over for the election handling to our Neighborhood Board Assistant.
Okay, so at this point, if there's any nominations from board members for the position of Chair, now would be the time. Yes, Dr. Dudley?
I'd like to nominate McCona Paris for Chair.
Thank you. There any other nominations?
I'd like to second.
Thank you.
Yes.
I saw. McCona.
Great, okay, so you guys don't, so just, uh, just for, uh, we don't need a second for what I, I'm sure that McCona appreciates it. Okay, so if there's no other, uh, there's no other nominations at this time, then we'll close, uh, nominations. And now I will conduct a roll call vote, so there's only one nominee. So if you guys could just say the, the last name of the person that you would like to be Chair. Bosler?
Harris.
Dudley?
Harris.
Herrera? Tahela? Khan?
Harris.
Livstone?
Harris.
Singleton? Tala? Harris.
I abstained.
Okay, uh, so we have.
You can do Paris list unanimously since it's easier for the minutes.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna have to make me do another, another vote. Great, congratulations, Chair. Chair, if you like, you're more than welcome to, uh, carry out the rest of the elections or I can do it. It's totally up to you.
We can now go, um, thank you. I'll take the gavel and we can now go to the election of the position of Vice Chair. I'm now opening it for nominations. Are there any nominations for the position of Vice Chair? The Chair recognizes Board Member Mikayala Lindstone.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Dudley.
Dr. Dudley, I will give you the courtesy that I was not afforded. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Dr. Dudley is accepted. Are there any other nominations? For Vice Chair? Calling it once, calling it twice, calling it three times, hearing all their nominations at this time, the nominations are closed. And then we go to a roll call vote for Dr. Kiyomi Dudley for Vice Chair. Please, um, answer by saying the last name of the person you wish to vote and if we can have our Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant do the roll call vote, please.
Bosler?
Dudley.
Dudley?
Dudley.
Herrera? Tahela? Khan?
Dudley.
Livstone?
Dudley.
Singleton? Tala? Harris?
Dudley.
Uh, motion passes, uh, five votes for Dr. Dudley.
Now, we have the position of Board Secretary and the nominations are open. Board Members, are there any nominations for the position of Board Secretary? Chair recognizes Dr. Kiyomi Dudley, Vice Chair.
Like to nominate Mikayala Lindstone.
Chair, recognize the nomination. Member Mikayala Lindstone, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the position of Board Secretary? And for the new people, what that really means is that you get to work with Logan to review the minutes and make sure that we, we actually captured everything, um, in a way that's so we're volunteering you for work. Mikayala volunteered, uh, so, sorry, Dr. Dudley volunteered Mikayala, so you might be volunteer for treasurer, so if you don't volunteer now. Any other nominations for Secretary? Calling once, calling twice, calling three times, hearing no others, nominations are closed. Board Members, Mikayala Lindstone is up for election for Secretary. Please, uh, vote by saying the last name and roll call vote, please be done by our Neighborhood Board Assistant at this time.
Bosler?
I like Lindstone.
Dudley?
Lindstone.
Herrera? Tahela? Khan?
Lindstone.
Singleton? Tala? Harris?
Lindstone.
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 Motion, motion passes with five votes for member Lindstone.
Congratulations, Member Lindstone, uh, for your position of Secretary. Now, we go on to the position of Board Treasurer. Chair opens up the nominations for Board Treasurer. Are there any nominations to the position? Chair recognizes member and Secretary Mikayala Lindstone.
Mahalo, Chair. I'd like to nominate, um, Tiare Taala. I saw her should just walk in. Um, I was treasurer last year, um, and it is not a difficult position. Logan actually really does all the work in giving you, uh, the, you know, the amount and, and whatnot. So I'd like to nominate Tiare Taala.
Chair recognizes, uh, the attendance of Board Member Tiare Taala. Member Tiara, Tala, are you agreeable to accept the nomination to Board Treasurer?
And I nominate Mikayala Lindstone.
She's already.
Interested?
Sounds good. Are there any other nominations to Board Treasurer? Chair calls it once. Any other nomination to Board Treasurer? Chair calls it twice. Any other nomination to Board Treasurer? Chair calls it three times, hearing no other nominations, nominations are now closed. There is one member on the ballot for election of Board Treasurer, Board Member Tiare Taala. As we go into the roll call vote, please, um, you say the last name of the member you wish to vote for. Roll call vote, Trusty Assistant Logan Hutchison, please.
No. Bosler?
I'm just not sure who's, is it Mickey or?
It's, uh, it's member Tala. Yeah, Mickey.
Mickey nominated you and then, oh, and I nominated Mickey, so I wasn't sure which.
Mickey can't be nominated because she's already has it.
Okay. I was trying to double whammy her. Sorry. Okay, um, Mickey.
Wait a minute. There's only one person and that's Tiara.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
No worries. Um, so Board Member, I heard that you had a question about who was on the ballot and it is Tiare Taala, um, was nominated by current Secretary and Board Member Mikayala Lindstone.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna continue the vote.
Yep, go right ahead.
Bosler?
Tala.
Dudley?
Tala.
Herrera? Tahela? Khan?
Tala.
Livstone?
Tala.
Singleton? Harris?
Tala.
Tala. Uh, motion passes, uh, six votes for Tala. Uh, no abstentions.
Thank you, Mickey and fellow friends.
Awesome. Congratulations to all of the elected officers at this time. Chair would like to take the time, uh, especially since we have new board members. That if there's any questions about procedure or protocol, or you're just confused about anything, anybody says, just raise your hand, throw a pen, say McCona, "Hey, just get my attention" and then we'll address it. Because this is our community forum and everyone's here to learn and everyone, and the board members are here to make good decisions for the community. And if you don't know what's going on, can't really make good decisions. So feel free to chime in because everybody, um, doesn't know something and everybody else here can help them out. Okay, now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Kiyomi Dudley. Yep.
Maybe we could have them, uh, the new people tell us a little bit about themselves and introduce themselves to the board.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and, um, just checking with Logan Hutchison, uh, Logan, um, that's not on the agenda. So do we need a two-thirds vote in order to put that on or is this, uh, administrative and programmatic?
Uh, I, I mean, it, it sounds silly, but I would just recommend that you guys do it during community concerns.
Okay, I like the advice, so we're gonna take introductions during our community concerns where, uh, the concern was, we don't know who you are, uh, so you can introduce yourself. Okay, awesome. Also, we'll do introductions of board members, um, including, um, the current serving board, returning board members if they wish to say something. So it's fair game for everyone, um, when we get to community concerns and announcements. Thanks, Logan. That was a great suggestion. Now, moving on to board business, a election of officers at this time, um, the Chair will entertain if the board believes we need any other officers than the ones currently elected. Okay, hearing no one else, I'm bringing up any suggestions for new offices. Um, let's move on to city monthly reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department.
Hey, good evening. My name is Chadigashi. I am at the Kapole Fire Station Number Forty. Uh, statistics for the previous month for fires, we've had zero structure fires, five wildland or brush fires, two nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, and thirteen activated alarms without fire. Other emergencies, we've had one hundred ninety-one medical calls, zero motor vehicle collisions involving a pedestrian, uh, eight motor vehicle crasher collisions, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous materials incidents. Our fire safety tip of the month is grilling safety. Uh, please keep these tips in mind as you enjoy your summer events. Always use barbecue grills outside away from doors and windows. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas. Cook with caution, be alert. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup from your grill. Don't store any grill up on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of a building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings or garages. Are there any questions?
All for the report. Um, are there any questions from fellow board members for Honolulu Fire Department? In person or online? Okay, hearing none? Are there any questions for Honolulu Fire Department from the community on, at large, online? Or in person? Hearing none, mahaluni for the report. Keep on doing the good work protecting us out there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now let's move on to Honolulu Police Department's report.
Aloha, Board Chair and Members. Congratulations to any, uh, new appointments. Aloha to the community of, um, Makakilo, Kapole and Porke Halei. I have the statistics for June of twenty-twenty-three. So motor vehicle deaths in our district, we had thirty-seven of which in our area there were seventeen. Burglaries, twenty-three. Uh, our area was six. A hundred thirty-four thefts of which, uh, sixty-two were in, um, Makakilo, Kapole, Honokai Halei. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, twenty-eight total for the district of which eight were in our area. Speeding fifty-nine citations given, miscellaneous violations, four hundred, parking violations, fifty-eight. Total citations was five seventeen.
Logan, um, sorry about that. Sorry, Officer. Um, if we could have the audio returned back on, off of mute, that'd be great.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. The last ten seconds, so.
I mistake. Go ahead, Sergeant.
Do it again.
I just go back to that last, yeah, last.
Yeah, just like the last couple of sentences, that'll be great.
I think, uh, the last ten seconds would be our citations. Fifty-nine speeding, four hundred miscellaneous citations for moving violations. Fifty-eight, uh, parking citations. Uh, total citations was five hundred seventeen. Uh, total cost for service, eight thousand four hundred eight. In our area, two thousand four hundred thirty-four. Any questions at this?
Mahalo for the report. Are there any questions from fellow board members? Are there any questions? Okay, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kiyomi Dudley.
Um, last meeting, I talked to the, uh, officer who was here and, uh, asked about the fellow who, uh, killed the lady at the, on the, uh, steps of the police station. What, what's happening in that case? He was going to report this time about what, what has happened and is happening.
Um, as far as, uh, I think you're asking about, uh, whether the, um, person that was released was upset because he didn't get, um, bus fare?
Yeah.
Things like that. Um, so that's not a regular, uh, practice at the police department. You know, if, uh, there was an officer that, uh, really said that, uh, officer that releases him from the station, uh, if the person asked for it, they may, uh, give them bus fare or something, um, if they choose to, but that wouldn't be an official service that the police department offers, so. I just wanted to let you know that. I, I did check on that.
Well, the reason that we brought it up, or I brought it up, is that we were told by Officer Pagan that, uh, the, um, police had no money to give to people, uh, who needed bus fare. And one of the reasons that we have such an increase in our homeless population is because people were being brought here, uh, for crimes because there was no place to check them in in the city. And they would, uh, be, um, you know, officially brought in and then released and they would have no money to go home. And my question really is, um, was that the case with this guy? Did he have no money to go home and is that why he was so angry he killed the lady?
So the specifics of that case, I'm not at liberty to, uh, I don't know for the first part and it's also, if it's in court, we can't really discuss it, so.
I just wanted to know, is it in court? Um, I mean, you know, I'd, I'd like to follow it and I'd, I'd like to make sure that. I, I think if the guy was given no money and he was kind of nuts anyway, and if he went insane enough to kill somebody, that there's a reason why he did that and that ought to be brought out in the trial. And I really want to make sure that it is brought out in a trial. And that's why I keep asking what's happening with this case. So if, if you find out what is happening with the case, I'd sure like to know.
Try to look further into it.
Thank you.
But, um, at that time, the receiving desk, the cell block, the police cell block in town was under renovation. That's why they were released. They were being brought to Kapole.
That's right.
And, uh.
And then nowhere to get back.
Yeah, he was brought, um, his charges were dropped by the prosecutors. So that case was, uh, released, it was, uh, the investigation was stopped pending, uh, further development and, uh, he wasn't charged for the crime, so he was released.
As far as killing the lady?
Oh, no, that happened after, yeah, so, yeah.
All right. But, uh. That, that, that's what I'm really interested in.
Okay, I understand.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Officer. Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Kiyomi Dudley for the follow-up from the last meeting. Are there any other questions from fellow board members, online or in person? Are there any other questions from the community at large on WebEx or Kapole Halei? Hearing none, mahaluni law, appreciate the work you're all doing and, uh, appreciate if you could follow up on the questions from Vice Chair.
I'll do that.
Okay, mahalo.
Good to see you again.
At this time, the Chair would like to see if we have a representative from the Board of Water Supply with us this evening.
I think he has. Hi, Chair. Uh, my name's Nicole Rattwell, Board of Water Supply. I'll be joining you going forward at the Neighborhood Board meetings.
Awesome. Welcome, Nicole. Good to have you. Have someone steady.
Thank you and congrats to all of the the newly elected, um, board members.
Mahalo. Uh, is there anything, um, that you would like to formally report this evening or you're just introducing?
I just have a quick announcement. Um, first, there were no water main breaks in the Makakilo, Kapole, um, Honokai Halei area in June. Um, and then our announcement is after a three-year hiatus, we are bringing back our annual Halava Zirik Escape Garden Unthirsty Plant Sale for twenty-twenty-three. It's gonna be held on Saturday, August fifth from nine AM to three PM. Uh, admission is free and includes a variety of local zirik plant vendors and informational booths. Uh, so we invite the public to visit and learn about plant care, pests, backyard composting and more. So people can go to www dot boardofwatersupply dot com for more information. Um, the only thing we're not gonna have this year is our keiki booths and, um, food vendors. Um, but if there's any questions or concerns about anything else Board of Water Supply related, I'm happy to take those back.
Mahalo, Nicole Rattwell, for the report from the Board of Water Supply. Are there any questions, uh, from fellow board members? Are there any questions from the community at large? Okay, hearing nothing, uh, at this time, thank you and we really appreciate us, you being with us and look forward to having you, uh, for the months to come.
Of course. You guys have a good night.
Now, let's turn to, um, the representative of Mayor Rick Blanchiardi. Mayor send me someone new?
Yes. Thank you very much for your service. My name is Keith Suzuka. I am the newly appointed Deputy Director for the Department of Land Management. Uh, I've been on the job for all of three weeks, I think, and so I'd be happy to take back questions, but I probably know nothing. Um, let me give you the mayor's report, uh, and I'm gonna apologize because my eyes are so bad. I am gonna probably have to take off my glasses and read it halfway through. But, um, first item is that, I think as we all know, the, uh, rail started on June thirtieth and the city, city leaders, uh, marked the occasion with a grand opening at Halava Station, featuring live music remarks from Mayor Rick Blanchiardi, Governor Josh Green, Senator Brian Schatz, and a number of other dignitaries. The second item, um, tax relief for homeowners, uh, and I am a beneficiary of this one. Um, the mayor signed the, um, the operating budget, uh, for two thousand twenty-four and I'm gonna take off my glasses. Um, among the city's top priorities for the fiscal year twenty-four budget was a historic property tax relief for nearly one thousand, uh, one hundred fifty-two thousand qualifying homeowners of which I was one. Uh, and so you should have seen if you were qualified, a hundred seventy-five dollar credit on your tax, um, bill that you just received. And, uh, yeah, that was a nice surprise. Um, second, a third item, uh, two central Oahu pools reopen, um, after repairs, uh, just in time for the keiki summer fund program. Um, they are, uh, the Bill Vappor, uh, Junior Waipahu District Park, which reopened April twenty-eighth, um, after nearly six years of being closed. And the Pearl City District Park Pool reopened after nearly five years of not being open. Um, the evil, uh, fourth item, Evilay Resource Center, uh, is set to accommodate as many as nineteen patients at one time with a goal of being able to provide permanent housing for patients within one month. And, um, the cities, the last item, uh, from the mayor, the city's, uh, rental and utility re, the relief program is temporarily reopening this summer thanks to twenty-five million in state and local fiscal recovery funds from the city council. With respect to, um, an announcement from Human Resources Department, the city and county of Honolulu, uh, was among America's best employers, um, uh, by state ranking number two as an employer in Hawaii and number one in the state for government services. Another tax, uh, real property tax, um, announcement. The, uh, Budget Finance Department, uh, wants to let owners know about the real property tax credit program and that, uh, and the action that the city council took to increase the income limit for, uh, for this program from uh, sixty thousand to eighty thousand. Uh, this twenty thousand increase allows a large number of homeowners to apply for this credit whose incomes, uh, were previously, uh, over the hundred, uh, the sixty thousand limit. Uh, you can apply for the credit online and I think there were some forums and information at the table as well. Uh, the last item that I, uh, have a report for is from the Board of Water Supply. Um, every five years, the Board of Water Supply reviews its current rate schedule and structure as part of, uh, the, a cost of service study. Uh, Board of Water Supply operates, uh, operations are funded by repairs. These rates, uh, fund capital improvement projects, pipe and plumbing replacement and repair facilities, maintenance, water quality testing, conservation and watershed management, customer services, as well as general operations for the eighth. The agency, it's a semi-autonomous agency of the city and county of Honolulu and it does not receive any funding from. The agency, it's a semi-autonomous agency of the city and county of Honolulu, and it does not receive any funding from the real property taxes. As part of rate setting process, Board of Water Supply would like to present to each board the proposed five-year increases. The presentation is about 20, 30 minutes long. They apologize for the length, but it is due to the information we believe is necessary for you and the community. We're looking forward to scheduling presentations during the month of August and September. If you are unable to have Board of Water Supply present during, due to other critical issues, there will be three meetings in August that your community can attend. Monday, August 12th, Benjamin Parker School, 6:00 to 8:30. Tuesday, August 15th, Japanese Chamber of Commerce, 6:00 to 8:30. And Wednesday, August 16th, Kapolei Hale, 6:00 to 8:30. Last thing I have to report are responses, these are departmental issues follow-up. There were two, to my knowledge. The first one dealt with a question about the Makakilo Drive median grass cutting. And the response that I received from the Department of Facilities Maintenance is that that particular median was maintained on July 1st. And prior to that, it was cut on May 25th. And the present maintenance cycle is about every five to six weeks based upon current resources. The second item that I'm reporting on is there was a concern that the Kapolei State Skate Park had incidents with homeless camp people nearby and skater, skaters were assaulted. The resident requested lights be installed at the park and also requested increased police presence. The response is, again, from the Department of Facilities Maintenance, that they conduct stored property ordinance enforcement and storage of property that is illegally being stored on Kapolei Skate Park property in coordination with DPR, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the HPD. HPD as enforcement is warranted. That is the report that I have. Any questions?
Mahalo, Keith, for the report. Are there any questions from fellow board members? The chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyony Dudley.
I just want to talk a little bit about the medians. Five to six weeks is ridiculous. I mean, that's, that's, we are all be laughing. Five to six weeks, but they don't have to worry about Makakilo Drive anymore because the whole system is broken and nothing is growing. Everything is dead. So if they would like to try to get things going again, I think we'd be happy to have that. But five to six weeks is ridiculous. We need at least every three weeks. Should be every two weeks, you know? It is absolutely disgusting that one has to drive up Makakilo Drive to those beautiful homes that are so expensive. And you can't see across the road because the bushes are three feet higher than you are. Okay, so I just, you know, the city is not doing its job and we are sick and tired of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't, don't kill the messenger.
Mahalo, Vice Chair for the comment. Chair recognizes board member Thad Sprague.
Good evening. Now, I'm now a former board member, so, you know, whatever, anyway. I don't mean to pile on following up with what Dr. Dudley said, but, but yeah, I've been bringing this issue up for the last couple of months. And I'm going to steer the question back in a slightly unfair direction, and I apologize for that. But, but what I see is that the medians down in Kapolei, in front of Safeway, in front of the police station, et cetera, down along, what is that? Forget the name of that road. Those look nice. And then you drive up the hill and the medians don't look nice. Currently, as Dr. Dudley touched on, I guess the sprinkler systems aren't working or aren't working properly because most of the grass is pretty dead. So three to five weeks or five to eight weeks, maybe too much at this point because the grass is dead, which is obviously a separate issue that needs to be addressed. It's my understanding that two different departments maintain the sprinklers and cut the grass. So, you know, I don't know whose door we should be knocking on to request the proper service. And from a community member's point of view, it doesn't matter. The issue should be addressed. We should get the same level of service as other communities. I feel disrespected with the way that we're treated with respect to the median, and I'd really like to see it corrected. So that's the first thing. And then if I could have another thing, I would like some statistics on the ridership for the rail. You mentioned the rail. I would like to see some numbers. I'm sure you don't have them right now, but if, if those could be provided in future months, that would be outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thad Sprague for your comments and questions. Chair now recognizes community member Patrick Watson.
Aloha, Chair, board members, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I just had a follow-up regarding concerns that were brought up at a previous Neighborhood Board meeting about the skateboards park. So I, after the meeting where the gentleman came and mentioned that his son didn't want to go to the park anymore, remember that? Because he was scared and there was homeless people and drugs. So after that meeting, I went up to the skateboard park the next morning. I went to go get my coffee and I drove up there. And of course, there was homeless people there. There was like a tent set up right at the mouth of the skateboard park and had two people, Jenny and Joey I met. And so I mentioned to them what had occurred the night before at the Neighborhood Board meeting. I said, you know, I'm here because kids don't want to come here anymore because you guys are making it scary for them. They're talking about being intimidated, drugs, all kinds of stuff. And Jenny was the lady who was there and she said, well, you know, we don't do that, you know, we, we keep it clean. And then at night, we, you know, we go camp in the trees behind the park. And so then I said, okay, and then so I walked around the park and then can I share my screen by any chance? I have a picture that I wanted to show you folks. Is that okay?
The chair would allow it as long as we technically can do it. Logan, is that possible?
Yes. Okay, I think that's a yes. Okay. Okay, so, share. Can you folks see that picture?
Yep, can see it. Thanks.
Okay, so that was the person, when I walked over to the bowl area or this one ramp area, this person was sitting there in a chair, and of course you see all the piliki laying around him. And so I went back to the people at the front, you know, and I said, like, what about the guy that's laying inside the skateboard park? Well, that's a blind guy, you know, and so we don't really have any, you know, like say over him. I said, okay, well, that's what we're talking about, you know, that this is the problem is that kids are going to walk over here. They're not going to want a skateboard. They see that, you know? So then I mentioned it to her and I said, you know, if the community is really concerned and I'm concerned, I'm going to start coming up here all the time. Well, I came back a couple of days later and everything was good now. There was nobody at the front. Everybody cleaned up the bowl. So I don't know if it was because me or whatever, but I think, you know, just showing more interest and presence in that area as, you know, the community, as adults, because I'm afraid of those guys, you know, just go over there, say whatevers. But I think maybe that might be helpful, just so people just show up more, just to patrol, you know, after work or like before or whatever. So I just wanted to make that comment and thank you for your time.
Mahalo. The chair recognizes board member Michaela Lindstone.
Mahalo. I'd like to echo all concerns that were previously shared just now. I too am disappointed in our green spaces in our community. You know, we've had a fairly wet summer and Kapolei Regional Park is pretty brown. And it's not just Kapolei Regional Park, but even Kapapopui and Eva. Tried to go there the other day with our students and it was locked and it was closed. And I guess it was for paving, but we had no notice, no one informed the community, no one knew that they would be closing that park. And so just communication with community, you know, parks, just the Parks Division is, it's continuously disappointing. I mean, they never fail to disappoint, and I'm sad to say that because I have many friends who work for DPR. And it's, it's, it's just disappointing, it's infuriating, just the condition of our public green spaces.
Mahalo, board member Michaela Lindstone for your shared concerns, the ones previously mentioned. Are there any others wishing to ask a question or to share concerns to the mayor's office? Chair recognizes in person, Logan, if you can see the names of the first one you want me to recognize. Board member Tialet Talala. Oh, wait, the other board member. Okay, so the other board member is recognized first. I don't know which one Tialet is pointing to. So whoever she's pointing to, you recognize first. Hello, Logan, and if we could, please unmute on your end. That'd be great.
Thank you. I've heard frequently concerns being raised about our Kapolei Park across the street from the library. It's getting fairly treacherous for our keiki. I have two young ones that are there almost nightly trying to play and it is, we have big potholes. Some are even 12 inches deep. And there are, there's been attempts with tape, taping it off. But that really doesn't stop children from, from playing. And it is a bit of an embarrassment. It's right there in the heart of our town. It's a beautiful park. It just needs a little maintenance. And I was wondering if, where that is on the list of priorities, if that's getting worked on. Also a concern in that same park is a nice bathroom facility. But we have soccer, we have tag football, we have a lot of sports. And many of the families are not going in there to use the restroom because they are encountering homeless folks. Yeah. And maybe that's something we can take on as a board as well, what, how we can encourage, I don't know, police, not, not HPD, but our own neighborhoods policing or, I'm not sure, I haven't thought of that, how to work that out yet, but it's definitely an issue that we're having. And I don't want to put it just on the mayor, but I think we as a community collectively should consider this and keeping our, our green spaces safe for all users.
All board member for raising that concern to the mayor's office and acknowledging the agency of our board to be able to couple and do stuff as communities, so that is right on. I'm going back to Logan to let me know who's the next person in person.
Yeah, thank you. Just a point of clarification real quick. You said, the potholes, where are they at?
In the park.
Which part?
In the playground.
Play regional.
It's all, all over there. So it's the squishy kind of rubbery material, the mat. And then it's a layer of black underneath and then a layer of cement.
Okay.
And then a layer of dirt underneath. And so in some of these potholes are all the way down to the dirt. And it's, it's, it's definitely a safety concern because if a child drops off of there, because they often do, they'll hang and they drop. That ankle can break so fast. It's a huge liability issue for the city.
Thank you for the clarification. Next is a board member Talala.
Chair recognizes board member Tialet Talala.
I just had a question about the real property tax credit for homeowners. It might apply to lots of folks in our community. I was wondering, does a campaign go out for it or something to let people know since the death, the application, the deadline's coming up in October? I was just wondering if there's like, is there a way to get all this information out? I don't know if some people follow the tax website, that's why. So I was wondering if there's a coordinated effort or should we just, as board members do what we can to disseminate the information saying, hey, this is available, like, you know? I got you that only in the mail? Check your mail.
Yeah, Chair, if I could just hop in, I can provide a little bit of context on that.
Right ahead. The chair recognizes our Neighborhood Board Assistant to.
Yeah, so I know that there was a news release released by the mayor's office and then definitely the boards. I mean, you guys are, you know, first line of defense. I have some of the documents right over there for distribution. It's also in your guys' Google Drive folder. But as far as, but yeah, it's basically just trying to word of mouth, right? And then the mail program, like, like a board member bossler said.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
If I could just add.
Yep, go right ahead.
I have the easiest question of the night.
Take that back, but just, I learned a lot actually from the paper. There was a school line or something, maybe last week. And when you read that, I think it was very helpful. So that's just a tip. And my only other thing is that I, I'm very sorry that you folks well, feel in that your concerns, you're not being treated fairly in some cases. In other cases, that parks and green spaces have deteriorated to that extent. It's kind of shocking to me personally, but in any event, we'll take those comments back and see if we can get an answer for you. And I apologize some behalf of the mayor.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kyony Dudley.
I just want to say, I think we're going to like this guy.
Yep.
Awesome. Are there any other, oh, yes, the chair recognizes someone.
We had a community question. She's been very patient.
So Neighborhood Board Trusty Assistant Logan, can you announce the name of the community member and have them come up so we can see?
Yeah, if you're comfortable, if you don't mind, come and send right up next to him. And then if you could just say your name before you speak. Thank you.
So my name is Cara England, and for the mayor's office, I have a question. Last year I was very active with the Sweep Coalition, and I do believe, I don't know if you were in that meeting, I'm with the Radical Hale, I do outreach for the homeless. And I know now there's a case coming up, a class action case about sweeps being against civil rights. So I just kind of wanted to tell you this, that as an outreach worker, as an outreach organization, when there's a sweep, it makes my job harder to get my clients housed and located. And I truly believe that sweeps are not humane at all. I mean, I understand the storage issues. I would go along with the sweeps and, and they hand out the citations. And the week later, they come and take it away, which is fine. We have to offer those struggling with homelessness an alternative. Just like today's article in the Times now, I can go on the grid for Partners in Care and there'll be zero vacancies. So if I have somebody at Kapolei, the skate park, and I say, do you want to get up the streets today? And I go to the grid, there's absolutely nowhere to move, there's zero. And then at times, whole new people. So I, I'm stuck as an outreach. So I kind of went to address that because the police didn't make any comments about that. I don't know if they're still doing the sweeps. Normally, it was sergeant or lieutenant.
Bagon.
So he didn't, he didn't, he didn't show up. I didn't see him. He's been on it with Ken in a while, you know, sweeps. So I just kind of wanted to know, and I'm going to be, I used to be online, but I'm going to be a person now. So really I'm interested in what the city has to say about that particular issue. But I can comment back to Mr. Wilson, just to let you know, my husband is a volunteer in White Skateboarding Association. So if you were to go on Saturdays and Sundays, they cleaned the park, they cleaned the park up for the last 20 years, I know. So I'm just curious for Mr. Wilson, when you had said, oh, the next day it was cleared up. If it was a Saturday, it was my husband and his crew.
Awesome.
Not to toot his horn, he'll never, ever, ever take credit. With his crew, there's like eight old timey men. I mean, these guys skated in the 80s.
But Jesus, almost next door.
And they would actually maintain the, I mean, the park. And they do coping and they sweep and they paint all on their. So they, they had told me to paint to me and said, you know, the home system. So they they had told, she'd paint to me and said, you know, the home system to the park and I would go out there and talk to them, just like Mr. Wilson did. They're one of very nice people. Some of them are drug addicts and drug dealers, but majority of them are just struggling individuals. I kind of like to say.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, community member for sharing your mahalo and thank you for the work of your husband and the old timey crew on that does community work to help us keep our streets and green spaces safe. Chair recognizes community member Patrick Watson.
Aloha Chair, yeah, just to follow up on what the last lady just talked about. So first of all, I attended the Kapolei Neighborhood Security Watch last night and the HPD officers that were present, Officer Montalbo and Shimotsu said that they were gonna go to the skateboard park today to do another kind of evaluation. I don't know if it was a sweep necessarily, but just to kind of see what's happening. So I think the presence is increasing and I wanted to say thank you to her and her husband about, you know, their efforts and what they're trying to do to help clean up the park too. Because like, like I just said, I think the more we are active as a community and show more presence there, just to pull up and talk story. You know, I think maybe that would be helpful because I grew up catching bus to Ala Park in the sixth grade. And I never had any of these concerns and I made so many friends and it really touched me when the guy was saying my son that used to be where he would go to find friendship and stuff and now he cannot, he's afraid. And that that just sucks. That's just really unfortunate, you know? So anyway, mahalo for your time. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments to be brought to the office of the mayor from the community or board members? Any in person? Logan?
No more in person.
Awesome. With that, we want to welcome you, Keith. Congratulations on being the job for three weeks and we wish you well.
Thank you.
If anything we can do to be of assistance to us, to help you to do that heavy lifting there, please let us know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo for coming. Awesome. Now let us welcome our council member Andrew Tupola, our representative.
Hi, aloha Chair, how are you?
Well, thank you. Aloha, council member.
So yeah, I gave out a few of these letters here. We did send the email link and I have some here if you guys need any. So welcome to the new Neighborhood Board members. I hope to get to know you guys and that you guys get to know my office. Definitely we serve as kind of a liaison to help the lowest ground level complaints get to the right departments. So in regards to, say for example, like a former board member Thad brought up about the trimming. So DFM, which is Department of Facility Maintenance, just got a new director and so we are going to confirm him on August 9. We met, I met him today for the first time. His name is Gene Albano. And for those who don't know, Department of Facility Maintenance plays a huge role in the city. They paint the crosswalks, they fix the stanchions, they cut grass. So not having a director has been hard for us because we work with Department of Facility Maintenance like nonstop. Because they are the guys that can help us with almost every broken thing in the city. Our supervisor for this area for Kapolei, his name is Keau, he's from Nauta Police, super good. Their yard is here in Kapolei. I can give you guys his phone number, his work phone. What I would encourage is that people get get to know how to do that themselves. Because like Keau will take calls from anybody, like if it's like a stream cleaning or whatever, and then they'll start to slot it into their schedule. So definitely you can go through my office or you can give to the mayor, but I always encourage just like ground level, like what's his name? Okay, what's his phone number? Oh, it's Uncle Keau, okay, call him up. Keau, can you come help us with this trimming or whatever it is? Most of the time the crews can handle it. The second thing I wanted to bring up was in regards to the park. So Kapolei Regional is definitely a difficult park. I will send to DPR your concern about the holes. We just handled the court case where a lady who was visiting fell in a hole at Kapolei Park and sued us. So it's not a small deal, it's a big deal because anybody who gets injured at these parks, the city is liable. So we will make mention to DPR about the holes in the park that's not safe. In regards to presence, so we are working with HPD and DPR and I think we're finished actually having an MOU for the police to start training up at the archery range. The training will not include bullets, will not include lead. It's actually tactile training because they need more space than just the police academy to train. And that is going to increase presence like tenfold. Because then if there are cops coming up that hill every day, they can at least do a sweep of their property and then back down. So the new what would you call it, major over the division, his name is Danny Hernandez, good kid, he just started that like three weeks ago. We are trying to get more police to come in through the park often because we do think it's an issue. Board member Mikayala had been helping me with R3, which is called Restoring Connect Revive. It's a homeless program that I've been working with the community members to try to specifically target what's going on at the park. We have been trying to help in the Kapolei Regional area. And just for everyone's information, the stored property ordinance is what it's called when they actually do the notifications and the remove stuff. We have monthly meetings. My next monthly meeting is next Friday. It's at 11 o'clock. It's with all the CPT officers. So Sergeant Fumi who sat here, that's Pagan's boss. So Fumi is the sergeant over the whole CPT division. Pagan works for him. So Corporal Pagan does know the schedule well, but Sergeant Fumi knows all the moving pieces as well. So every Friday, first Friday, we go through every area and where we're going to be addressing. And I had the same concern as you. My thing was that we can't be doing this without outreach. We have to have outreach and it has to be coordinated because we're not doing anything more than moving people if we're not actually placing people. For everyone's information, the nonprofit that's in charge of outreach for Kapolei is called oh my gosh, Achieve Zero, yeah, I was like Nikki, Achieve Zero. And so we do work with them. Once we start up R3 again in August, we actually work very specifically with them through names of people, areas, who's getting placed, who needs jobs. A huge part of what we need to do is encourage work. Because no matter if you get placed in housing or not, you still need some form of income in order to sustain yourself. So we're getting vouchers for the program this upcoming year and we had a handful of people who really did want to get into a better place. But either way, we have to help people with jobs. Not to take away Diamond's thunder, but the governor did sign into law the pilot for a hundred thousand to send people back to reunite with their families. So DHS is going to be executing that and of course, you know me, I'm the first person raising my hand, like I got people ready. I know people that are, you know, want to reunite and so we're going to try to tap into that program. Lastly, I think for, you know, for the things that I handed out, we are going to be having a town hall regarding the property tax. So we'll let you guys know because obviously I like to disseminate information in a different way than just handouts. I love having the community gatherings and of course streaming it live so we can hit at least close to a thousand people every time we talk about something. I also just passed Bill 56, which had to do with renovations. And this was very, is going to be very helpful for homeowners. Some of the things that you guys should know is in that bill now, if you have solar and you're trying to get like for like replacement, you don't need a permit. If you have a fence that's six feet or under, now you don't need a permit. And I also put in three for repairs, under 10,000, you don't need a permit and for electrical and plumbing under 2,500, now it doesn't need a permit. We were trying to expand the list of do it yourself projects so that DPP, which is already overwhelmed with their permitting problems, can have some people step out of line. So I did include in there my rejection of the salary increase and we did today have a handful of people get put on the parks board. I don't know if you guys know that the city has like a board of volunteers over parks, but it was kind of not working for a while and now they re-nominated people. So we're really hoping that we can get that going because I agree with all of you guys. I do love the DPR staff. We love all of them. We work with them, but it's just, it's just not sufficient. It's not sufficient at all of our parks and at our bathrooms. We have parks people that have to buy toilet paper themselves that work for the city, which is not acceptable because everybody who works for parks wants to, you know, do a good job, but the resources are not there. So we are hoping that some of those changes will help out. So I'm open for questions. I'm sorry that was so long. And to board member Dudley, my condolences to your family and for the passing of your wife. I'll be there Saturday, but we we definitely feel feel for you. She was a great and wonderful, wonderful woman that did community choir. I loved her. Open for questions.
Mahalo, council member Andrew Tupola. Appreciate all of the good work you do in our community with us. It's an awesome partner. Chair recognizes first board member Mikayala Lindstone, then we'll go to Mick Ferrer after.
Mahalo, new council member Tupola. Oh my gosh, I have so many questions. First of all, I feel like R3 is the most impactful program that we have right now addressing housesness. And it's only because I, that's the program I've seen with my eyes and I I feel like it's it's so super impactful. So I'm so grateful there's a, it's going to continue in August and so on. Secondly, is the 311 app not working that people need to call Uncle Keau like? Because I use the 311 app all the time and sometimes I get, you know, they they'll respond right away, we're going to address this. But I I don't know if 311 is working.
Who checks 311? But I could just text you Keau's number.
Okay, yeah, but if 311 is not working, I think that we should cancel that because like I teach kupuna to use the 311 app because they get frustrated because they use our parks and our kupuna population is growing. And so they get very frustrated when they report something on 311 and it doesn't get addressed. So maybe that program needs to be evaluated.
I'll look into it on who checks it. My concern is that even for some of the places they tell us as council members to report things, we ask like, who's checking these? So we kind of just started to call people directly to to make sure that whatever we submitted, which we still submit things electronically through a riser, which is the way the city does it. So we still leave a paper trail of the concerns from the community, like I'll do a riser for your concern, but then I still call the person directly and I'm like, hi, did you get my riser? Because it's about a hole. So I don't think everyone should do it twice, but I'll see if 311 is actually being regularly responding to complaints.
Yeah, that's great. Mahalo. Okay, two more questions. Sorry. That is great about the police department training up at Kapolei. I didn't know that, but more presence there is really needed and any kind of lawful presence really helps to eliminate the unlawful presence. So that's really great. I'm wondering if maybe if there's, because Kapolei and that area by the archery is a really sacred place and it's a traditional cultural property. I would love to share with HPD and those training, the historical significance of that area if there's ever an opportunity. If you know anyone I can communicate with on that, that would be great.
Yeah, I can connect you with Major Hernandez and then also Mikayala, I think, you know, I'm working with Representative Alcoz to see if we can improve some of the overhangs that they have in there because it kind of looks like The Walking Dead inside there. And they also haven't like pumped the septic in, I don't know how much years. So I'm trying to get the septic pump and then before the end of this year, I'm going to fix some of the overhangs. But I think if they do start that full police presence thing, I think they should start with you explaining what the area is. Maybe we do a blessing because really no one uses that area. So we want the area to be used, but we want it to be used correctly. So I'll set that up with you.
Yeah, mahalo, absolutely. And last thing, the arc cut on Kamaaha and Kapolei Parkway. They, the criminal transportation stations, they were going to put it in, you know that dangerous intersection by Mahaana area. The arc cut hasn't been put in. They said they were going to put it in June. It's almost August. Just wanted to put that on your radar.
I'll get ahold of them. They said no later than August, but August is like next week already, so I don't know how fast they can get abstentions, but it's supposed to be up already. I'll call them. I'll call them.
Okay. Mahalo for all you do. Mahalo.
You.
Mahalo, board member Mikayala. Now let's go to board member Mick Ferrer. Uncle Mick doesn't seem to be, some seems to have been having some technical audio problems at the moment. So are there any other questions from fellow board members, fellow council member? Are there any questions from the community at large?
Chair, I wanted to just say, I emailed you the numbers for the rail for former board members, Thad. I don't have his email, but I'll just read it out. So the first four hours on June 30th, we had 8,942 riders. And then for the free fare, they had 71,000 people. That was a four day period. But the regular service average is about 3,150 for the weekday and 4,030 for the weekend. So I copied board member Dudley and yourself because those are the only emails I have. So if you can spread it, thank you.
Awesome. This is a good time to mention that for all of our electives, for all of our community members that wish to get information out into the cloud drive for the Neighborhood Board, please contact our Neighborhood Board Assistant and just CC him. You can send it to anyone you want. But make sure you CC him because then he'll put it on their cloud distribution drive where everyone has access. If you miss anyone in specific. Awesome. Any other questions or concerns for our council member? Hearing none, we, any other concerns from Uncle Mick Ferrer, I'll ask him to directly reach out to your office.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo, new. Now let's bring up our representative, Uncle Frank, for the OMPo report.
Yang here. Kathleen Rooney of the Ulapono Initiative is now the Citizen Advisory Committee Chair. And Adria Lamb of Neighborhood Board Number 30, which is Kanaioe, is the vice chair. OMPo Executive Director Mark Garrity discussed the Oahu Regional Transportation Plan for ORTP 2050 as a multimodal challenge. He said that bus rail connections will work well. However, the Pearl Highlands crosswalk to the rail station is a concern. The best solution would be a pedestrian bridge and funds for that project could be found in the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is for bicycle and pedestrian initiatives. A signal also could be used there. It was suggested that this item for, be an item for the August Committee Agenda. Dallas Ege Avapo briefed Revision 15 to the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP. Said that the TIP must be consistent with the ORTP and the Makakilo Drive extension is not for consideration at this time. As usual, I expressed my intention to vote no on recommending the revision to the policy board and received some support from others, but it was approved by a 12 to 5 vote. Mahalo.
Are there any questions for Uncle Frank on OMPo report? From board members or the community. Hearing none, Chair does have a question. Uncle Frank, it is a new board and wanted to check with you to see if you wish, you are willing and able to serve as our representative to the City of Arizona Advisory Committee moving forward for this cycle.
Yes, I'll be happy to volunteer. If there's any change right now, there are allowable three representatives, that is you, Mr. Chair, as well as Chair Ferrara and me. If there's any change to that, I'd need to notify OMPo. Otherwise, it's, it can just stay the way it is.
Awesome. With that, the the chair would like to see if we could add the appointment of, or the reappointment of Uncle Frank Canavio as the staff member, as an advisory committee member. And we would need to do a two thirds vote and then we would have to do a vote by majority to seat him as that's the pleasure of the board because it's not on the agenda. But it is, doesn't impact a large member, number of people that I believe that meets the threshold issue. Chair recognizes the handout, Logan.
Hey Chair, are you talking about your guys', if you guys are talking about your transportation committee? That, that is.
No Logan, we're not talking about our transportation committee. We're talking about the Neighborhood Board's representative to the Citizen Advisory Committee.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, Uncle Frank has been serving that for quite a while. And at some point, we're going to ask Uncle Frank to go and mentor somebody else, so so that he can take a break.
He stays on top of it pretty good though.
Chair recognizes Dr.
I move that we have Frank Canavio as the representative to OMPo.
I'll second it.
Has been moved and seconded. And the first of all, we have to take this for two thirds to add it to the agenda. And the chair will call it to see all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say nay. And are there any abstentions? The chair hearing, only ayes, no nays and no abstentions, calls it unanimous and you have met the two thirds to add it to the agenda. Now having that on the agenda, the chair would like to entertain a motion to officially seat Uncle Frank Canavio as an advisor to the Citizen Advisory Committee for OMPo. Is there a motion? The chair recognizes Dr. Kiyomi Dudley.
Shall move.
So we move to seat Uncle Frank to the CAC of OMPo. So we move to seat Uncle Frank to the CAC of Ompo. Uh is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Board Member Mick Ferrera. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say a ole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Chair does not hear any a ole or any kanalua, so no abstentions and no nays, so therefore calls it unanimous. Congratulations, Uncle Frank. Um with being reappointed. And with that, we really do want you to consider if there's any younger generation member and that we need to start mentoring. Not just for your position, but everybody for all of your positions. Uh we should uh consider doing that to start training the next generations. Okay.
I'll be happy to work with any volunteers.
Awesome. Oh, um Chair recognizes the one member Mick Ferrer. Go ahead.
I think he kind of enjoys the um the pain that it gives him, so he's retired. I don't know how he does it.
We we definitely appreciate all of his efforts and thorough reports.
If it were for the Makakilo Drive Extension, I might retire.
Mahalo. Okay, uh at this time, we're gonna go into community board concerns and announcements and for the first round. At the suggestion of I should talk to you, Kiony Dudley. Um if we could go through board members doing an introduction and share a little bit about themselves and what they hope for our community. Um and we'll do it through the roll call order so that our trusty neighborhood board assistant can help facilitate us being able to introduce ourselves. So Logan, call out the first person, please.
Okay, uh Amy.
Hello, how my name is Amy Bosler. I am a former teacher, high school teacher at Nanakuli High. Yay Hawks, go Hawks. I am a mom of two, military spouse, recently retired military, so we are finally home for good. We love, I love the west side. This is the best side in my opinion. It's where my heart is. I think we have. Best kid, the best community. Um so I'm here, um I'm here to give back. Um I'm not currently teaching. I am raising two children at home. Um and I wanted to still be able to sur- serve our community and um. That's why I'm here. I'm also a uh avid water woman and an animal lover, so I. Uh every time I hear about the homeless sweeps, I will be asking, um what about their pets? Because I do know that these animals um. Ride a lot of support and stability for our homeless populations as well. Thank you.
Mahalo, Board Member Amy Bosler. Uh welcome and we appreciate you being here. Okay, Neighborhood Board Assistants, who's next?
Uh Dr. Dudley.
Okay, um I just wanna say uh great to be elected again, uh so happy to be on the board. I was asked how many years I've been on. I think I came on in nineteen ninety-eight and so this will be my twenty-fifth year. Maybe. That's enough.
Mahalo Nui Loa, uh Uncle Dr. Kiony Dudley for all of your years of service and continuing to serve and uh our hearts to you and um. And your ohana during this time of loss from anti, so wishing you well and praying for you all. Okay. Okay, Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant, who's next?
Uh just for some context, Dr. Dudley, uh I was born in ninety-eight and I'm twenty-four years old. Next is Board Member Ferrera.
I'm Michael Ferrera and I've been on the board, I think, since twenty seventeen. I worked for the Department of Land and Natural Resources for a while. I worked for the DOD before that. Um I was your Transportation Committee Chair. Trying to get the Makakilo Drive Extension is like getting stuck in the mud with your wheels spinning. But I'll keep at it between Frank and me. Other than that, I live in Upper Makakilo. My beautiful wife Mindy and I enjoy riding Harley Davidsons and. Enjoying each other. Yes, she has her own Harley Davidson. So I appreciate being re-elected and uh Kiony, I'll. See you at your wife's memorial. I'm sorry for your loss.
Mahalo, Uncle Mick Ferrera. Appreciate your time of service. And love your advocacy work for all of our community members that enjoy the roadways on two wheels. And all of the work that you've done over the years to make sure that uh we keep going on the Makakilo Drive Extensions, which was promised to our community. Um let's go to the next person, Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant.
Uh next is Moon.
Uh aloha kako and welcome to all our new uh members of Board District Thirty-four. Aloha. Uh my name is Moon Kaheli. I've been in federal law enforcement for about thirty-three years. And I reside in Hawaiian Homestead in East Kapole with my now freshman um. Daughter who attends uh Kamamia Kapalama. Um and the reason why I got into community of service is because I I've been a visitor and I've watched the ba- the panel, met. Uh several of you all and I think, well, I can contribute small kind, but eventually, you know, as a team, I think we can get things accomplished. Um I know anti's at a good place right now with Dr. Dudley and I'll see you Saturday. Aloha.
Mahalo, Uncle Moon, um for you, your continued service and your professionalism. And mahalo Nui for raising a wonderful daughter and perpetuating the arts. With her and with you. Runs in the family. Okay, um who's next on our Trusty uh on people who were discussing?
Uh back in.
Hi, um I'm Matthew Khan and uh new to the board. It's my first time. Uh I have a big family here that lives in Kapole and Makakilo. And um I'm new to the, I think we've been living here for about. Uh a year now, so I'm an older millennial that uh just bought a home, so I'll pause for five seconds so everybody can celebrate. Okay, that's good. Yeah, so um I'm a small business owner, uh have a wife and two kids, uh two boys, nine years old, ten years old. We love this community. Um I'm a big server, a big advocate for the church and I serve a church every Sunday. And um I think it naturally translates to me serving my community. I just wanna be open. Uh uh you know, source of uh service to um my community. Uh I got a lot to learn. And uh yeah, I'm really grateful to be here and to meet all of you.
Mahalo Nui Loa, um welcome, our nearest board member and welcome to our community resident for a year, to you and your family. Thank you for doing the entrepreneurial work of business. And that's awesome and super congratulations on being a homeowner, like for real, like. Like I'm I'm like the older, the oldest end of the millennials and like I'm finally a homeowner and most of my classmates are not even here. To be homeowners, right? They're they're not in the way cuz they couldn't afford.
Right.
Congratulations to you and uh welcome to the service here and uh and we're thankful that your faith community. Um leads your heart to serve here uh in the broader community as well. Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant, uh who's next?
Uh next is uh Member Livstone.
Aloha Nui Kako, welcome to all our new board members. It's so wonderful to have you as part of this team. I'm Mikiyala Livstone. I actually grew up on the on the east side of Oahu. I'm from Kailua and when I came to Kapole. And started teaching at Kapole High School and I learned of the history and the stories and really the mana of this place. I fell in love with it. And wanted to share it with all the children who come through my door. So I run an out-of-school program. Um with children and youth and um in every day of my life, I dedicate um to them. So that they know their place, they love their place, and they wanna be um lifelong stewards of the place they live. Mahalo.
Awesome. Board Member Mikiyala, so welcome back. Thank you for your service. Especially to teaching the next generation, Nakiki, and continuing to advocate for our open spaces. Um and making sure that our ponar are remembered and taken care of. Mahalo for your work. And your acknowledgement of the place. We won't hold uh it against you that you're from Kailua. Who's next on Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant?
Uh so Board Member Singleton, Michael Singleton isn't here tonight, but uh he is a new member, so I'll double check with him to make sure that he uh. Is aware of when the meetings are after tonight, but next is Board Member Talan.
Hello, my Belina Mai. Thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to serve. You and alongside you, to our new board members, all of our board members. Um I'm Mikiyala Ta'ala. I. Am a mama. I'm a multiminor. I grew up in Wapaha. This is my Bahipana. Um but I send my kids to school, some of them. I send other kids to school in my living rooms and homeschool. I believe very strongly in topple mindedness, in open discussions, linear progression, um. Words as many common goals as we can gather. And I ultimately believe that the Allah's Spirit is the answer to every world problem.
Mahalo, Board Member, uh returning Board Member, Yavita Ta'ala. Thank you for your continued advocacy, particularly to care for our Ina. And to make sure that as we do development, that it is pono. Because we're we're only having this place as a gift that we're holding for the next generation that we're caring for now and. Thank you for bringing that mindset uh for us always. And continuing to be an awesome mama and an example, a role leader, a role model. Okay, um. Trusty Neighborhood Board Assistant, who's next?
Uh you are the last one, Chair.
Okay, mahalo. Thank you, everybody. Let's go on to the next of. Okay, aloha kako, um uh mahalo Nui Loa to our community members, new board members, returning board members. Thank you for your service. Um and thank you to all of our community members that have entrusted this team um to help them to do the hana um. For this neighborhood board to do during this time and this season. So thank you all of our community members to electing us to this office. And please know that all of you that elected us, we will call upon you to help to resolve the issues because it's not only the place of government to do things for us. But it's also the place of community to do what we can for each other. So you put us in office and we're gonna call on you for help. Now with that, um for those um that are new to me, uh I'm um a local boy, um. Grew up fishing and farming uh in family in Lululela and Nanakuli, on the west side of Oahu, currently residing in Kapole, homeowner, finally. Um older millennial, mother retired janitor, dad retired ironworker. I was raised in the faith community of St. Rita's Catholic Church on Hawaiian homelands, went to Nanakuli Elementary School. Graduated Kapalama Kamehameha schools and then I went to MIT with a bachelor's in environmental science and engineering. Following some work back at home at Shamanod University, building their community service social justice program. I did also do schooling uh in the west coast at the Graduate Theological Union with the Jesuits at the. Jesuit School of Theology of Santa Clara, getting my master's degree in philosophy and theology there. Did work on um how, how. The intersection of the Hawaiian culture and the Christian religion intersected in Wai'i. And talked about how the spirit of God or Kua was actually already known amongst the people because evangelism first proceeds from. The divine, not from those that bring the story from their area. So I talked about the intersect and that's what I did a lot of work there. And then um did more work in the community called to do different things, including joining with the labor movement and working with the ironworkers specifically. And finally, uh I got tired of one too many board meetings where lawyers were telling me that my opinion didn't matter because I wasn't a lawyer. So I got a law degree from Boys Own, William Masters Richardson School of Law, so when they say, are you a lawyer? And it's like, oh, I got my juris doctorate too, so. My opinion now matters in legal matters. Um. I've been like all over the place in my work, from farming to fishermen to consultants, lab specialist, entrepreneur, served in Hawaii State Senate. Um in the Judiciary and Labor Committee, um and I serve our community on different um organizations. Currently serve as the First Vice President for the National Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs, Chair of the Principal Hawaiian Civic Club Scholarship Fund, Raising Funds. And giving it to our community members um for for educational needs. Um and a proud member of the LPIO Social Services um group that we're trying to address systematic issues. For negative social determinants of health. And what does that mean? Our we're trying to lift our people out of poverty because you can't really take care of people's health if they don't have a house. If they can't afford the proper food, if they can't afford um the proper things to care for themselves or their family. And I also serve on the One Nichols Comprehensive Health Center Board Member, no longer as their youngest member cuz we have a new one that came in that was younger than me. So that's a little bit of my background and I'm proud to um be serving here uh with you all on this team. And uh really, really appreciate to have veteran service members and also uh having new blood with us. To integrate us with your enthusiasm to move the next level of our care for our community. So I do hope um that we can not just relive old problems, but we can view uh and leave in the next two years. Um our area and our community just a little bit better, so that um that's all we gotta do in my mind, just a little bit better. Mahalo Nui Loa for allowing me and serving um honoring me to be your Chair and uh thank you very much.
So know now why he is our Chair.
Okay. So um I will share one thing, like Uncle Mick and others. One of the reasons why I share um part of my resume isn't just for me. But because I stand on the shoulders of my kupuna and those before me, like I was the first person to go to college in my family. I was the first person to go to graduate. I was the first person to be a lawyer. I came from a community where people said nothing good comes out of it in Nanakuli. Where the options was to be a dope dealer, a gang banger, or like to go into constructions or trade. And sometimes I've hopefully become a good um like get a good look, like. And I agree with Sister that said earlier, our west side is amazing community, but the opportunities that we have are few and far between. And sometimes there's a disconnect in accessing the global resources. So I see myself as a as a role model, but more importantly, as a bridge. For our community so that we can bridge in those resources that are necessary and translate for those that didn't have the opportunities that we are given. So so I say these things not out of pride, but out of humility and honor because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the people, even the people on this board, you know? Like it wasn't for your help, I wouldn't be where I'm at and serving the way I can. So mahalo Nui. Okay, I'm getting emotional, Uncle Mick. Okay, let's move on. Any other announcements from our board members?
How do you follow that?
Okay, are there any uh announcements from our community members? Chair recognizes our community member, um Patrick Watson, and then we'll go back to him.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to um share a concern. Uh we have two coconut trees in the back of our house up in Kapole Knowles. And um it looks as though both of them have been affected by coconut rhinoceros beetle. So um I just wanted to kind of make that known. Um it's it's already kind of known that this is an area of infestation, but um. What I did find out was that one way to to treat that is if you purchase. Point thirty-three millimeter monofilament netting, which you can't get here for some reason on the islands. You have to order it online. And the dimensions have to be half-inch spaces to an inch space, uh you know, squares stretched. And then you can create these things called bow ties and you can tuck them into the 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 um areas where the palm fronds come off of the main. Uh chunk, or you can wrap the tree if it's small enough. But um yeah, I I um noticed it. And we've been cutting back the fronds to get so we can actually wrap a tree. And then if you go to Tracks Beach in Nanakuli. And you look at the bathroom area, there's about like seven trees surrounding the bathroom and they're all affected by coconut rhinoceros beetle. So it's a good. Indicator of what to look for and kind of um the damage that they're causing and they're spreading a lot. So that's just my community concern. Mahalo.
Oh, Patrick Watson for bringing that up. We did have that wonderful presentation um last year. Um, last cycle about the coconut rhinoceros beetle, and that if we don't get it under control. Um, we are seriously looking at the extinction of our, our coconut trees across islands. So uh, whatever we can do to, to take care of that, that'd be awesome, including reporting and reporting to the people. Um, that actually are tracking and trying to help with eradication. So mahalo for raising it. Any other community concerns, uh, in person, going to Logan for directing the in-person um comments?
Aloha board, aloha community. My name is Ben Williams. I'm the race director for the Koalakai Sunset 5K Run and Sprint Traplon. Coming up, we've set the date this year for September fifteenth and sixteenth. Uh, the event is going to happen out near the Coast Guard Station um on Coral Sea Road. Uh, this is a, a great opportunity. I know last year, board member Listone was, was extremely helpful in, in uh educating me on the history of this area. Um, it's a great opportunity to share that history with the participants. We, we get participants from all over the island that come to this event. Uh, if there's anybody that would be willing to, to come in and share some more history this year. I, we would certainly appreciate it. A big value of ours is the, the keiki uh competitors. So we started eight years old, um, the entry fee is forty dollars for keiki athletes, but we have sponsors to, to cover their entry fees. So if there's any families out there interested in participating, um, it's a great first time event. And uh, and we can help with that entry fee if that's an issue. We have equipment. Uh, we have instruction, we can come give, uh, we do actually um every other week, practice out there, out on Coral Sea Road. Uh, and so if there's anything we can do to help the, the community participate in this event. Um, it's a great chance to get families outside doing healthy things and enjoying, enjoying that very special place. Um, so that's, that's my rule with that. I have some flyers, I'll leave them by the door. Uh, one other thing, I, I really appreciate this, this particular board. I look forward to coming to this meeting. Um, I feel like there's a, a great generosity with, uh, I just really trust, I trust this community. Um, I was approached by uh the lineup recently to, to get involved. Um, helping them put on similar kind of keiki swimming and running events out there. And I, I don't live out here, I live on the Limer Side, I live in Kanihohe. And I do try to get around the island and connect as much as I can. But if anybody would be willing or interested in talking to me offline. Um, my phone number, my email is on this flyer. I would be interesting, interested in just talking story about. How the community feels about the lineup. I don't know much about it, uh, except from what I've heard, sort of from indirect sources. So I, I would, I, I would very much be grateful for it, for any feedback the community might have. Before I get myself involved in this uh project out there, um, that would be great. So, thank you, appreciate it. Oh, I mean, are there any questions, I guess?
Yeah, mahalo, um, are there any questions regarding the event? The chair recognizes one from online, uh, Yavita Pomeranz from some of the gabbers office, asked what type of event was it?
I'm sorry, one more time?
What, what type of event is it?
On Friday, Friday night, there's a five K running event. Uh, it's actually beautiful. We finish heading back into the sunset and uh, we had some local music there performing last year. And some pizzas and, and that was really nice. Uh, and then Saturday morning is a sprint trap on, so it's a three hundred meter swim, a twelve mile cycling route, and then a five K run. That's on um Saturday, that's the adult distance. The youth distances for the keiki is a one hundred meter swim, a six mile bike, and a one mile run.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, Chair recognizes, uh, board member Mikel Levinstone.
Ben, I just want to mahalo you. You're so great. You, you always come to community first before you make decisions. And then you learn as much as you can about something and you make, you, you adjust based on what you've learned. It's such a beautiful, you have such a beautiful aura about you and how you go about your events. So mahalo for that. Um, I have some youth that I think are going to participate um in this upcoming one. And so um, I'll, I'll get with you on that. Mahalo, Ben.
Excellent. Thank you.
Awesome. The chair recognizes, uh, Vice President Dr. Keanu Dudley.
You said you were interested in our reaction to the lineup, but I don't understand what you mean by the lineup.
That uh, there's a wave pool that was built out, uh, it probably falls smarter ever. Uh, but I, the, the community in, in general, I'm interested to hear what, what everyone's thoughts are. Um, my values are, are very much in respecting the, the history of the place that we are putting on these gatherings. And uh, I, I need to learn more before I get involved again.
Awesome. Um, Chair now recognizes, um. Board member Mick Ferrer.
Might you um, give the information on your event to our NCO assistant?
Awesome. So um, can, can we get a digital copy sent to um our Neighborhood Board Assistant? That'd be awesome. And then we can make sure it's on the cloud if it's not already there.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
For the community level, you don't have to be an elite athlete, right, to do like?
No, yeah, in fact, we, so I, I put on uh four traplons on the walk throughout the year. And this is our, our most beginner friendly month. So this is the, the lowest entry fee. We try to run this like pretty bare bones, uh, short distance. Swimming out there can, you know, hit or miss depending on certain conditions. But otherwise, the road surface is, is great and the run is, it's all very flat and uh, very beginner friendly. Yeah, if you have any questions, I, this is what I do. I'd love to help you get more involved.
For you, yeah.
Yeah, let me know. My number's on here.
Yeah, that's my first announcement on lineup. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Um, thank you, board member, Yavita Allah. Are there any other questions from the community or from the board? Hearing none, thank you again for coming before us, letting us know what's going on and seeking our input. Okay. Uh, Chair recognizes Logan Goretta, what's his name?
Uh, Tony, you want?
Tony's ready. He's like standing, he's ready.
I was just stretching my left.
Right? Stretch our leg.
Yeah, aloha, welcome all the Tony Gaston.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Members of the board, members of the community, I'm Tony Gaston with the Hunt Companies. But before I talk about the Hunt Projects, uh. I want to say that you guys, well, first off, I am also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, but I'm wearing a different hat. I represent the American Society of Civil Engineers.
You really do need an extra hat, like just so we know.
But.
There are so many of them.
Yeah, but um, the way Frank represents this board is incredible. This community, Frank comes out so firm and every single time, he just thank him. Because, gosh, he just does a great job on that citizens advisory community, so. Okay, but let me let you guys know what's going on over at uh the VA clinic. Things are progressing extremely well. In this image here, you can see, look at this, uh, there's, there's a lot of finishing work happening. The roofing with finishing work, they're gonna be doing the parking lot soon. If you look over on the far right, look at those meandering sidewalks. You know, that's where the people will be able to gather outside for break times. Inside the building, you can see here, they are starting to put in paint. It's in very different stages all over the place. This one, they're just getting ready to prep painting. Look at this area, it's already been painted. They put down the flooring, so they're protecting it. Finishing up the walls, they even have a little enclosure for fire extinguishers. This is moving along so well. Check this out, it's an indoor trellis. The VA guys, they're gonna be having a nice clinic out there. And finally, here's another area where the light fixtures are circular. The project is still going great, still and on schedule to be completed in January of next year. And again, it'll take the four to six months for the VA people to come in and get their actual businesses to open. Out on the roadways, here's just an overall aerial image, things are going well out there too. Because the main thing we're able to do is, hey, take a look at this, we got the landscaping installed. And inspected by the city and county, we are finally able to start our ninety day maintenance period with them. So, yeah, again, things are going very well. We still are remaining on Copa Hay. Still getting approvals. We finally got the state DOE approval. Now we need State Department of Land and Natural Resources. After we get them, then it goes to the United States DOE. From there, we should be able to come in and finish up this road. Finally, I wanted to show you the Waikia intersection, hey. Things are going, you can see that yellow fence, and if you drive over there, you'll see it too. They did do some of the underground work. So again, this is going to be a new traffic signal that gets installed to help regulate the traffic pattern during peak traffic hours. They should be done in the next two to three months with the traffic signal. That's my quick update. Are there any questions?
Mahalo, the twenty-four, amazing updates as usual. Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
Hey, Tony, I always enjoy your presentations because you have so much enthusiasm. And you show some real progress each time. If, I was wondering if whoever you guys are dealing with at the DLNR. If I may be able to. Find that out or be able to help out, um, let me know.
I know who exactly it is now, it's actually with the director now. So she is just getting it reviewed, and if everything is okay, she'll sign it.
Absolutely fantastic. That's who I report to.
Well, you can tell her.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, Chair recognizes, um, board member Uncle Moon Kalale.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gaston, for uh your monthly and very thorough reports of the outside building of the clinic. Is there any way possible for us to receive somebody with the VA? To let us know all the different amenities that's going to be available there, once it's completed by you all? Is that possible? And if so, thank you.
I'm almost positive it's possible. If we can't get somebody from the VA itself, I will get somebody from the Hunt team to come out and outline it for you guys also.
Well, that's important because a lot of my neighbors are veterans like me. I'm an Army veteran and they're asking, Moon, we have to drive all the way to Tripoli to get this, this, and this. Will this substitute the drive? I said, you know, let me, let me, you know, ask and here you are. Thank you, brother.
Moon, I know for a fact that it will assist Tripoli big time. The whole, one of the big objectives of this is take away traffic from Tripoli. There are a lot of veterans who do live on this side of the island, they don't have to drive all the way to Tripoli anymore. The only uh, one thing I did want to share is the clinic will have hours of operation. It's not like a hospital. So they will be closing at four thirty on a daily basis, but on Tuesdays, they stay open till six o'clock.
Okay, that, that's good to know, but you know, I think, I think we're more concerned of all the different entities within the facility. That's all. Thank you, brother.
I'll get that information for you. If I can't get it myself, I'll make sure I get somebody else.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
Hey there, Tony. Again, I forgot to tell you, um, I'm an Air Force veteran and I'm also the commander of AMVETS Post Four. And what we would like to do is get some kind of notification of when you have a ribbon cutting. So that I can get my commanders and some of my constituents together to attend. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, we will be very closely related with the VA people. So when it's going to open, of course, yes, we, a lot of people are going to want to know that. I hear you.
Awesome. Uh, are there any other questions or comments for the Hunt Companies? Don't go tell me. Okay, seeing none, mahalo no'ila, appreciate it, and we'll see you next time.
Thanks, everybody.
Are there any other community uh announcements, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, um, let's now move on to state monthly reports. I'm going to US Congressman Ed Case's office. Not seeing or hearing Uncle Nestor Garcia at this time, uh, let's move on to US Congressman Jill Tukuda's office. Not hearing Kendra at this time, um, let's now move on to uh Gordon Pang, Governor Josh Green's representative.
Aloha, good evening. Chair Paris, Vice President Dudley. Members of the Ma'akamukapale Honkai Haleh Neighborhood Board, congratulations on your selection. Thank you for your service. Tony. Fellow West Coast Way residents, I'm Gordon Pang, my day, I'm the Housing Information Officer for the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. We're trying our best with the resources we have. And at least twenty-three a month, I'm the representative to this board for the office of the governor. Um, I want to point your attention to the July twenty twenty-three edition of Kialahole. The official monthly newsletter of Governor Reed, among the highlights of this month. Uh, this month, our stories pertaining to the expansion of the Homeowner Systems Fund. And uh, a series of bills signed by the governor involving gun safety. Um, tackling domestic violence, anti-vaping, and environmental protection. Also, as many of you know from news stories, the governor on July seventeenth. Signed an emergency proclamation relating to housing, which in an effort to tackle boys' housing crisis. Aims to streamline the development process and empower developers and stakeholders. Create more housing opportunities, and in particular. Portable housing and workforce housing. Efforts being led by Chief Housing Officer, Ninety Maderos. And a group of government officials and stakeholders, known as the Build Beyond Barriers Working Room. And with Logan's diligence, I'm going to try and share. Browser. Okay, so, oh, it's not here? It's in black. Thank you. Well, um, this is the governor's homepage, here's the newsletter. Down here. And more importantly, here's the chief housing officer's page, if you want to learn more about um. Um, the emergency proclamation, go down here to Governor's Emergency Proclamation. And. We have a bunch of lovely slides for you. And other information that uh you can utilize. Um, aside from that, um. Last month, board member Lindstone requested that we again query state officials about jurisdiction over Kapale Regional Park. I asked the office of the governor to get into this matter. And unfortunately, uh, the answer that came back from the Department of Land and Natural Resources was again, that. The officials there do not believe that either DLNR or the state in general. Has any jurisdiction over any section of the regional park. And that, take any questions in post my end.
Mahalo, we've been paying for the report from the office of the governor. Um, are there any questions for fellow board members or comments? If we can take down the chair, um, that'd be great, Gordon. Um, Chair recognizes whoever Logan's gonna say in person.
It's me, it's Tiara.
Okay, go right ahead, Tiara.
Mahalo for being here and for giving with this noise behind us. Um, I have a question regarding the proclamation that the governor just issued about the housing, about. About doing away with as many permitting procedures as possible. I was wondering if there was gonna be an expansion regarding exactly what's gonna be done. I agree that there's a lot of bottlenecks that holds up certain processes. I don't necessarily agree with this wa- wide brush that we're just gonna like. Come over the thing and we're like, developers come in, we don't respond within ninety days and all this kind of stuff. And I know there's a lot of community concerns. And I'm sure that the governor is tracking a lot of those because he's very active on social media and such. And so I was just wondering. I'm sure that you guys are going to reach out again to the community and what's that outreach gonna look like? And is the outreach that you do going to be, we're still gonna let community? Chip in here, or is it that you're coming to us and telling us things are done and this is what it is?
Well, at this point, things are not done.
Okay.
And, um, things are still in flux. Um, I know that the administration is taking in a lot of, uh. Uh, comments and views and thoughts. And, uh, taking them all, all seriously and taking them into consideration. Um, and also can tell you that, uh, there are gonna be meetings of this working group. And, um, you know, folks will be able to share their manao there, um, as well. And of course, those meetings are going to be available to the public as well. I know that there were some concerns about sunshine law. And as a former reporter, you know, I can assure you, I, I'm. A big advocate of the sunshine law as well, but as I understand it, what they're trying to do here is, uh, to speed up the time. Between when they announce meeting and when they have a meeting. So it'll jump the six-day process, um, but the, um, meetings will, you know, still be available. And, uh, the minutes and all the documents will still be available.
I am, I'm a proponent for speed as long as it's held. In tandem with efficiency because they're not necessarily the same thing, you know, we can do many things quickly and get the whole thing wrong in the end. You know what I'm saying? So as long as. Everything has to be point, right? You know what I mean? And especially when it comes to this issue of housing. We all have a long history with developers and there's a lot of mistrust with the government regarding like, you said you're gonna do this. And we said we were gonna be included and, and you know, and it comes to the ground level, community members coming very agitated about how they live in their body part, in their spaces. You know what I mean? And the day while these meetings are going on and people are making decisions for us. I just wanna make sure that if we're declaring we're like an emergency status, you know. Being in an emergency doesn't mean we have to run around with our heads cut off, you know what I mean? In my mind, it means everyone come together, think really hard, and we have to take into account the very blistered history we've had. In this sort of area before, right? You know what I mean? And going forward, how can we definitely course correct, you know? And for me personally, it will be a ton of crap, measuring more than twice, three times, four times maybe. All, again, not just with the, um. Not with just speed, like I understand the process is slow and it's bogged down, that's part of the problem. But I just don't want to make decisions that are undoable. Now we found ourselves in even worse place, and we couldn't, we had this great opportunity to like, you know what, we can build trust here. You know, we can get the community involved, we can talk about people who consider this their home, not just this generation, next generation, generation after that. They're the ones that matter the most, in my view, you know? So what do they wanna see? I understand developers are gonna see some things and politicians wanna see some things too, but I'm talking about what do my kids wanna see? What do my grandkids wanna see? I didn't have grandkids yet, but I wanna know what they could see, you know what I'm saying? So I just, I understand everyone's mindful and everyone's got kulana. Um, and I just want that to be hopefully the overall message, you know, there's an opportunity here to do it better than we've ever done it. We don't have a history of doing it, right? So, that's my thing.
I think in response, I would just say, you know, thank you for your passion. That's what we need. And, uh, I highly encourage you and. Encourage you to invite all your, all your, your Hana and all your friends to, to pay attention and. Share your thoughts, you know, let your voices be heard. It's a democracy app, bro.
I know I wasn't heard, but I wanted it to matter, you know what I'm saying? So I don't, the pattern in my view has been a lot of, well, you can have a town hall, have they put the, you know. Decision gives me completely opposite of whatever I wanted, you know what I mean? So I don't wanna just be heard, I don't wanna be talking to the wind, you know, that's what Instagram is for. I want it to matter to the people who are in the room making the decisions, it's like the factor into decisions in the end. And it might need that people at the higher levels don't give what they want, because we're gonna give everyone else what they want this time. I'm saying that's always be the case, everyone gotta give and pay, but it would be nice to see more of that, and that's what I hear from my community members.
Mahalo, board member Tiara Ta'ala. Can we go now to, um, Vice Chair Dr. Kenny Dudley?
I just wanna say, uh, I'm so happy that we have Gordon Pang as our representative from the governor. He certainly is a extremely knowledgeable person. He, uh, has our interests at heart, and, uh, I, I, I'm just, I'm delighted that we have him as our.
We got a good one, we got a good one.
Yep, got a good one.
Well, Vice Chair, um, Chair recognizes, um, Board Member Mick Ferrer.
Hi there, um, yeah, you mentioned the DLNR and, uh, in the land division. They're working on a project to produce. Truly affordable housing out in the Ho'opilie area on land that the DLNR owns. That is in the proximity of the rail and public transportation. And right now going through all of the approvals and some of the red tape. To get that stuff done and without having to directly employ developers, uh, to get it done. So it'll probably come out in the news at some point in time if it hasn't already. But, um, it's being actively worked on in the land department to produce housing out in the Ho'opilie area. That, um, the state is basically doing it. So thank you for your part.
Thank you.
Mahalo, are there any other, um, questions or comments from fellow board members or the community at large? Um, seeing no others, uh, on board, um, as the chair, I would. Love to see, um, the governor consider. That, and use the neighborhood boards as an integral part of building affordable housing more before. Because as was mentioned here tonight, we're at the grassroots level of engagement. And from my understanding of the proclamation, it's not just building housing, but it's all of the infrastructure around that housing. Roads, sewers, wells, even parks. Like, so there's larger questions and, um, the neighborhood boards already have experience. Working on projects and we, we already know our role. We're here to advise. We're not decision makers, so you'll get honest community feedback in a forum that's already developed to provide such feedback on projects. So, um, really encourage the governor, uh, and the working group. Um, and the new, um, Chief Housing Officer to consider using us as part of the process. Um, when they're approving projects to get honestly good feedback from, uh, community.
I'll pass that message on.
Anything else, community, for the governor's office? Last thing I'll say is congratulations to the governor making such a bold move, recognizing that housing is, uh, is a problem. It's a crisis for our community and that, that is much mahalo as, uh, myself and the other millennial that said earlier on the board. We barely afford houses. So thank you for trying to, uh, to the governor for trying to address this problem.
Thank you.
So. Any other, um, any other last comments on, on, from the office of the governor?
I don't have the cable.
Hey, Chair, can you still hear us?
Yeah. Do you guys not hear me? For me now? Okay, um, so now let's go to highways division. Uh, thank you, Uncle Gordon, I appreciate it. Uh, let's go to highways division, uh, if they're available tonight. Not hearing anyone from highways division, um. Oh, can you guys not hear me in person?
We're working on, we're working on getting the screen with us, yeah.
Gotcha. We're gonna go to highways division, uh, right after. Am I back online in person? In Ha'ul, Kaple Ha'ul, I think it also represented Diamond Garcia that, uh, did a save for us.
Yeah, we're all good, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So let's invite, uh, Uncle Henry Kennedy from highways division, uh, to give us a report.
I don't think so.
Hello.
Yeah.
Hello, Chair. Hi, this is Henry Kennedy. I'm from the highways division, um. I don't have any presentation, but I'm here to take your questions. If there's anything that, uh, you want information on, I'll take it back and report at the next meeting.
Any questions for highways division? Board members, community members. Hearing no questions, uh, uh, at, at this time, um, the only question I have is, is highways, um, um. A part of being informed before or after the working group makes its determinations on housing? Are, are you guys know what your, what your place is in, uh, in affordable housing development in the Kaple area? Did they tell you guys yet?
I know we're gonna have, um, a, a meeting on it in the next coming weeks. So we, we haven't discussed how it's gonna be implemented yet, sorry.
Oh, no worries. Um, the only reason why I ask is because, um, Kaple is primed for a lot of multi-story vertical housing. Um, and, um, pretty sure highways will be involved, so we'd love to hear. Yeah, we'd love to hear from your side on whatever we can, um, that'll be helpful. In person.
Yeah, sorry, just to hop in, Chair, could, do you mind calling a quick recess? We're having trouble with the projector on site. I just need to troubleshoot for a minute.
Okay, um, so we'll have a recess, um, pending the call of the chair. Um, estimated is about, um, four minutes, but will I call back? So right now we're in recess. Or at least four minutes. Uncle Henry, if you can stand by, I think we still have a few more questions.
Okay, not a problem.
Hey, hello, Logan, you got something for us?
Yeah, Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we hear you loud and clear.
Okay, yep, everything should be good together. The projector is up and running again.
Awesome. Good job. So, um, with that, um, our audio technical issues have been resolved and, uh, the chair calls us out of recess at nine oh seven PM. And we're going back to the report from highways division, Uncle Henry Kennedy, and. We are in the process of doing questions and comments from board and community members, and now the chair recognizes Uncle Moon Kaila.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, um, Uncle Henry for a very thorough report. Uh, on, on, on the, um, wouldn't it be amazing if the express lane? That we use, if they call it zipper, could be extended back all the way to say. Honkai Hale, or what about exit one, A or exit one B? That way, you eliminate all the traffic coming from Makala. Nanakuli, so on and so forth, to include Kolina before they hit exit three. Five, seven, where the existing HOV begins. Just a thought, because right now they're working on the median strip adjacent to targets that's heading east. I mean, uh, I'm sorry, west towards, uh, I guess Mailei direction. But, you know, wouldn't it be amazing if we could get the express lane began right there by Honkai Hale? Oh, Hale, I'm sorry, and it eliminates so many cars almost immediately. And it'll free up the third way from say one A all the way to exit seven. Just a thought. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Moon Kaila. And not only, um, we'll be eliminating cars, but it'll be allowing, um, the express buses also. To get on earlier, and so that'll be amazing if that's, uh, possible in the future. Okay, um, Chair recognizes board member Mick Ferrer.
Yeah, I had sent a letter to Department of Transportation probably over a year ago. Um, expressing just that idea and. I tend to get back letters from departments like that that are generic to say, thank you for your inquiry, but for now, we don't have any plans. To do that, and it didn't really address the request that I had. Um, it seems like maybe somebody just had a canned letter that they send to people, but, um, I even considered doing. A resolution, um, asking for it, and, um, I still think it's a good idea. So I don't know where we escalate this to, but I'm still interested in, in having that done. I, on a daily basis, get. On that freeway going to the capital and, uh. You know, people are trying to get out of the west side and without having any extra lanes or anything like that. Um, you gotta go all the way up, you know, past Kania and to get onto the first on-ramp. For zipper lane and, um, I'm, I'm with you, Moon. I think it should go back quite a ways, so. Yeah, I don't know what we can do to, uh, push that ahead. I applaud the state for some of their traffic calming methods that they've got. Everywhere when the city and county can't seem to be able to do anything with Makakilo Drive or. Any of the city and county streets that we have, but, um, that's one thing that I think that's doable. That, um, we need now. Thank you.
Okay, well, um, thank you, Uncle Mike and Uncle Moon, um. We're in the process of doing our tenure plan. What I can do is I can talk to our people in planning and for the for the suggestion, see if there's any paperwork I can file. I don't know where it's going to fall on the priority list, but what I can do is go through that, you know, try to submit it for the tenure plan and see how it shakes out, and then come back and report what what the result is. Does that sound reasonable, acceptable?
I think so.
Okay, I'll do that.
I think that's a great suggestion, and from I heard from Uncle Mick Furr, I think a resolution on that idea might be warranted, particularly if there's a tenure plan. So if there's an information about how we might formally be able to make suggestions in the tenure integration outside of the Uncle Henry, I think we would be more than happy to do a resolution to that effect to bolster our position on that.
Okay.
Is there any other community members wishing to ask a question, offer comment to highways division or DOT general? For the states. Hearing none others, I would just also like to express my gratitude to the State Department of Transportation for their assistance on Fly Life Street and helping to mitigate speed. So they were helpful and for them reaching out in order to help us with some speed home stuff, speed bumps, traffic mitigations. So we really appreciate the willingness of the state to assist our community and the State Department of Transportation and their leadership in specific, so all in my law for your systems.
Thank you.
Those type of small things matter a lot to us. Protect the Kiki, protect our community members. Government gone good, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hearing no other questions or comments from the community, appreciate your very thorough report as Uncle Moon said this evening, we look forward for them in the future. And.
Okay, thank you. So I'll be here every third meeting, so if, maybe I can put my email in the, is there like a chat? And if anything comes up, you can always email me, yeah?
That sounds great, please provide the information in the chat and we'll can get it all into the cloud for those that are interested. Great, so now let's go to the next on our list and going with Senator Mike Gabber's office, and I believe Yonavi Pomerantz is still with us this evening.
Aloha, can everybody hear me?
So, great Yonavi, welcome.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Honorable Board and Community Members, I'm Yonavi Pomerantz, Senator Gabber's community liaison. Senator just wanted to give a quick update. Our special guest speaker for Senators July twenty-second Listen Story Community Meeting at Kaukuleh High School was Stephanie Kendrick, she's the Director of Community Engagement for the Hawaiian Humane Society. And she gave an update on the recently opened EVA location of the Hawaiian Humane Society. And we'll have a recording of her presentation and the meeting on YouTube. And Senator Gabber wanted to share about two recent Capital Improvement Fund or CIP releases. So eight hundred and thirty-three thousand was released to finance the construction of utility system improvements at Kalailoa Airport. And two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand was released for the Hawaii State Veterans Home to revert realot and transfer construction funds to fulfill the works of art requirements. And I will link the Senators' July newsletter in the chat, which has community and legislative updates. And with that, I am happy to bring any questions back to the Senator, mahalo.
Aloha Yonavi for the presentation, on behalf of Senator Gabber, any questions or concerns from community members or the board? Hearing none, just wanted to thank Senator Gabber and all of the rest of our electives for amazing legislative cycle of the state to help our community buy those resources and continuing to advocate for us, so thanks Yonavi and all you all that behind the scenes doing great work over there. I give our best, I give our best to Auntie Meg, we miss her.
Will do, thank you Chair.
Hey, let's go now to Senator Shimbukro's office, I think we saw Patrice Tana on earlier.
Hello everyone, it's Patrice with Senator Marilis Shimbukro's office. I just, I didn't have a report this month, but I am here to answer any questions or take back any concerns.
Chair recognizes Vice Chair Dr. Kiyani Dudley.
Aloha.
People are not turning on their video, so we don't see the picture of the person.
Hold on, wait.
Our request was to see a beautiful face even though you're, you know, like in your bathroom or.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Chair recognizes Board Member Moon Kaila.
Good evening, Patrice, hope everything is okay. Got a question, I don't wanna put anybody out in a, in a, up front, but what is the pot or the stance on weapon controls? Because there's so much weapon access right now in our public and our communities, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Moon Kaila, any other questions or comments for the Senator Shimbukro? Hearing none, again, thanks very much Senator for all of her work, especially this last legislative cycle and advocacy that she's been doing on behalf of our community, appreciate it and all your work. And the work of, back in the office still.
Yes, thank you so much, take care.
Aloha. Now let's go to our State Representative Diamond Garcia, live and in person at Kaukuleh.
Because I think you all are tired and I don't know how long the projector will last. So first and foremost, congratulations to you all, you were all elected officials, so on behalf of Senator Gabber and myself, we prepared certificates for you all, which I will leave with you, I will go right into my news, you know what, actually, I will read the last clause here, so once again, we are presenting this on behalf of the Department of State Legislature, congratulating your name on your election to Neighborhood Board number thirty-four. Now therefore, the thirty-second legislature of our state hereby congratulates your name on their election to Neighborhood Board number thirty-four, thanks them for their commitment to public service and wishes them the very best as they represent the voices of our community on the Maka Kilo, Kaukuleh, Honakaihale Neighborhood Board, signed by myself, Mike Gabber and the legislators. Congrats.
Thank you.
On to our newsletter, which I will pass out. Can you take one to pass it down the news, thank you. First and foremost, this past Monday was the return of the Royal Standard for our Queen. It's been one hundred and thirty years since that was ever seen here in the Book and Santa Oberfro. And so it finally came home, it was discovered two years ago in New York and purchased by the state of a princess who recently passed. And there's a QR code on there, so just scan it and you can watch the entire ceremony, it was a pretty moving ceremony. Next, on page one, it was groundbreaking of a new Hawaiian homestead being built, well, not a new homestead, but phase two of a Kulu O Kahaki homestead near the Croc Center, so in phase two C, there'll be about one hundred and twenty-seven homes there, so Hawaii dredging is now in the process of dredging and doing the foundation for the homes to be built soon. And after all is said and done, when phase one, two, and three is constructed, there'll be about one thousand homes just in that homestead itself. So that's that, page two. I recently attended the educational bill signing at Royal Elementary School, one of the highlights was SB nine four one, fifty million dollars going towards teacher housing, this is the first in our state. We're actually gonna put some funding towards building homes for teachers. One of the biggest problems here is teacher retention, and a big reason for that is the price of housing, so trying to mitigate that there. Also, lastly, there's, my office received some phone calls from some residents in Kalailoa Homestead. There was a crosswalk, which, there's a picture here, there was a crosswalk that was there prior to the repaving of Kaukuleh Parkway. And they repaved it, they didn't put it back, and there are lots of kids who cross their daily school, lots of Kupuna who were on their evening walk, and so I'm in contact with HHFDC to have that reinstalled. They're trying to pass the book around and say that's not their puliana, that is Hawaiian homeland, since Hawaiian homelands does plan to build more homes in that vacant lot near Kalailoa. So we're, we're working on that, and hopefully by the end of August or September, something will be done. So I'm open for any questions at this time.
Aloha Representative Diamond Garcia, are there any questions from fellow board members? Are there, Chair recognizes Doctor, Vice Chair Kiyani Dudley.
I just wanna say I'm really impressed with the things that you have on here, very, very Hawaiian, and it's just really good to see somebody so concentrated on Hawaiian issues. I do wanna say also that as far as the Kaukuleh crosswalk, you might keep in mind that Maka Kilo had the same problem, they paved over Maka Kilo Drive and took three of our crosswalks away. I noticed yesterday I was driving down and each street has a yellow sign up there pointing to a crosswalk, which still stands, but there's no crosswalk where it's pointing to. We would like to have crosswalks and we would like to have flashing lights to be able to push a button and get them to, get the cars to stop. You might think about the same thing here, and maybe we could get four of those rather than just your one.
There you go, in fact, I did talk to Hawaiian homelands and the state regarding putting up a raised crosswalk. There's lots of speeding on that road, and there is two schools on both sides of Kalailoa, Kaukuleh High School, Kaukuleh Middle. And cars, I mean, I've seen them go about fifty-five miles an hour there, and kids cross constantly, so having a raised crosswalk would force them to slow down, and I think would be helpful for our community, so working on that as well.
Aloha, Chair recognizes Board Member Mick Furr.
Yeah, wanted to thank you guys actually for those awards. We by and large volunteer to do this, we're not paid. And we have to work our jobs, we have to raise our families, and we have to pay our bills. And in the meantime, we go to this meeting once a month, however, behind the scenes, we're working on trying to bring results to our community. And it's really nice to sometimes get a little bit of recognition, even if it's just a piece of paper. It really means a lot to us, and we used to get them from the city council. But this is like the first time I think we've gotten it at the state level, so I just wanted to recognize that we do appreciate what you do for us. And thank you very much.
Aloha Uncle Mick, Chair recognizes in person Logan, who's the next?
Me again. Sorry. Okay, thank you for everything, awesome, awesome. I did have a question about the crosswalk, I live in Kalailoa, so this directly affects my neighbors. So is that lot? Okay, so when we bought these homes, this lot was pitched to us and where our community center was gonna be for our Kaukuleh people. That was seventeen years ago when I bought my home, has not happened, that I'm not gonna die holding my breath over it. But are you saying that, but then we're told it back to the state? Are you saying it's actually back in HJ's possession now?
Yes, so last year Hawaiian homelands purchased it, and so they planned, yes.
Oh my gosh.
I know, that's back, so the land is currently owned by Hawaiian homelands, and they do plan to build homes, part of the six hundred million dollars that was given by the state, Act two seventy-nine that passed last year, build homes there. Now, some residents did mention that, you know, when they originally bought their house back then, that there were plans there for a park or community center, or rec center, something like that. So at this point, the jurisdiction is with Hawaiian homelands, and so the Hawaiian Homes Commission would make the final say on what they plan to do there. But as of now, they do plan to build homes there.
I just, I didn't realize that there was, it was changed hand to be, and then pertinent to the crosswalk, I mean, if we can expedite that, because it is super important.
Yes.
All the kids are running back and forth, and it's a big highway, and I mean, I stop and pull over and tell kids to not sit in the curb because it's all dangerous, right? And, and it's a lot to traverse, so yes, mahalo for that. And yeah, Maka Kilo driving that too, let's get them all, bang them out.
Aloha, are there any other in person, Logan?
No Chair, no more in person.
Okay, seeing all this, thank you very much, Representative Diamond Garcia, for your service to our community, and thank you for those accolades that you passed out personally. If you can give the ones that are online to Logan, and then Logan can we figure out a time to get them to other people in person? And feel free to point it off to one of our neighbors on next to to bring to the next meeting. Okay, now let's move on to say Representative Kamani Suzo, or Representative from her office. Hearing none in person or online, let's go to say Representative Darius Keela. Hearing none online or in person, now let's go to Francine Murray with the Hawaii Community Development Authority. If it's possible, we'd love to have to see your picture, further requests from Vice Chair Dr. Kiyani Dudley.
Aloha everyone, and congratulations to the newly elected members. I'm Francine Murray from the Hawaii Community Development Authority. I just put a link to the HCDA July newsletter in the chat. The next HCDA Kalailoa Neighborhood, I mean, sorry, not Neighborhood, Board meeting is on August second. The agenda will be posted on the HCDA website tomorrow, and board materials will be attached to it by the end of this Friday. That's all I have, are there any questions?
Awesome, thank you for the update, are there any questions or concerns for HCD at this time from board members or the community? Chair recognizes Board Member Tiadetala.
Hi, sorry if I missed it, is the meeting online or in person or both?
Both.
Oh, okay, mahalo, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments personally or online?
Nothing else, then Chair.
Okay, hearing none, thank you very much, and did you want to give an update on the resourcing successes from the Kalailoa region? Or the challenges that we're seeing from the state side?
We, the legislature funded the Saratoga Avenue electrical improvements for the full twelve point five million. And we are moving forward to get that encumbered within the, within the fiscal year.
Nice.
We're, we're trying to have a RFP done before legislature begins, that's, that's the plan. And then to have that contract executed by June, so the work can begin. The legislature also provided additional five million for improvements in the, in the Kalailoa district. Those are for electrical upgrades, so we have to see what we can do with that five million, we're thinking that it may have to go toward that Saratoga Avenue improvements, only because those estimates were made back in twenty nineteen, and with inflation and the cost of everything going up, we might need that just to complete that work.
Awesome, thanks for the update, we know the victory of securing the funds, and now is the, the challenges of moving forward to getting it out in this first so we can get the work going. And Board Member Mick Furr.
Hi Francine, I really appreciate getting your emails on my, my state email address. And is those emails available to anybody who sends you their address?
Yes.
Okay, so all they gotta do here is maybe on chat, maybe send you their email address, so you can add them to the blast.
Yes.
I appreciate getting the emails, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, now let's go to community member Christine Watson.
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I didn't set my stuff up right, but anyway, I'm actually Representative Keela's, I'm representing, representing Representative Keela's office. I'm sorry he can't be with you today, but he, you know, if you'd like me to take anything back to his office for him, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, sounds good, right after, we'll come back to you right after. Okay, uh, sounds good. Right after, uh, we'll come back to you right after you finish with uh HCD and Francine Murray.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So any other questions or concerns for HCD? Hearing none, thank you so much for all the great work and definitely uh for the information that you push out to the community. So we're all informed what's going on. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha.
Aloha. Now let's go back to anyone that hasn't um that's still with us but hasn't done a report um back yet. Then we'll start with um Representative Keela's office, seeing Watson right there.
Um, yeah, I don't have anything to report. Like I said, um, if you know, if you have anything you would like Representative Keela to look into, I will be happy to take that back to him.
Great, okay, um, community and board members, um, any questions or concerns that you wish to bring up to Representative Keela's office? Um, one thing, um, uh, hearing none from the board or community members, one thing that would like to, um, mahalo of Representative Keela for is his um initiative and bold thinking of trying to find ways to handle our waste problems um on the island of Wahoo that disproportionately affects west side of Wahoo, um, with his thinking about trying to figure out how to leverage state resources for um new types of recycling or new types of uh uh energy generation, just a different way of handling waste to make it um easier for our site to actually not just be dumped on, but turn trash into resources. So we love his bold initiative as a as a freshman legislator trying to handle major issues, so.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to him.
The um Chair recognizes are, um, one of the board members raised their hands in person, right there. Or did I, uh, Logan, did, did, is someone in person wa- wishing to say anything?
Hey, Makana, uh, we're just having troubles with the uh projector again. I'm actually gonna switch to my uh which suggests my uh, my laptop mic for the remainder of the meeting since there's only a few people in present.
Okay, um, so long as everyone's able to.
Sorry, just gonna operate off of here. If you guys wanna, I'll just gather around, yeah.
Um, not a problem and uh feel free to uh on your end, um, to make the layout clearly, um, only highlight the speaker, that, that might be easier for people to see. Let me know when you're ready to roll.
Hey Chair, we're, we're all good.
Sounds good. Okay, um, thanks for holding in there with us through the technical difficulties, everyone. Now, any other city or state or agency or federal agency or elected official um would like to make a report that wasn't able to do so earlier this evening? Hearing none, and let's get to board business um for some amazing and and riveting things that we need to make decisions on. The first is um meeting date, time, location and format, including the online component. So um I will recognize um Logan. You have your hand up. What's up? Um, yes, Logan, I see your hand.
Sorry, uh, if you could just call a quick recess chair so I could swear in member Ferreira. He's the only uh member not sworn in.
Not at all. Um, let's do a two-minute recess subject to the call of the chair to return earlier so we can make sure that we're all legit with all of our board members. So uh recess uh at nine thirty-five PM.
Hey Mick, can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm just gonna recite the oath of office real quick. And if you could just uh listen in and afterwards, if you could say whether or not you agree.
Will do.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the City and County of Honolulu and the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which I have been elected. Do you agree?
I agree.
Great, thank you very much. Chair can uh end the recess whenever you're ready.
Uh Chair, um, it's calling us all of recess at nine thirty-six PM. Um Chair would like to congratulate um the officials swearing in and our newest board member Nick Ferrer is legit now, yeah. Right at time for voting for official board business. Um, um, it's nine thirty-seven PM, board members, and we have a bunch of logistical things to get through. So um let's try and make sure we can handle it all. The first is meeting date, time, location and format, online component. The current schedule is fourth Wednesdays of the month, seven to ten PM. Physically at conference room, at a conference room by Kaupea Hall and our backup is at Kaupea Lama Hall if none are available. At Kaupea Hall and to be virtually via WebEx. May I entertain a motion to set the meeting date, time, location and format to the current one we're using or any other motion?
I'll second.
The Chair and Dr. Kelly, Vice Chair, Dr. Tony Dudley moved and seconded by Nick Ferrera to keep the format at fourth Wednesday, seven to ten PM physically at conference room at Kaupea Hall or Kaupea Lama Hall if none are available, Kaupea Hall. And to also virtually uh use WebEx. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone in the public wishing to offer his testimony? Hearing no testimony being brought forward, hearing no discussion from the members, is there all in favor, say aye? All of course, ole. Are there any abstentions, say kanalua? Okay, hearing no nays or ole and no abstentions or kanalua, the Chair calls it unanimous. Now, let's go to determination of recess schedule up to three per year. If I recall correctly, we currently take a recess during the month of December. Um, and we uh may choose to do a modified schedule on the previous month. Are we interested in doing a recess um during December or any other months? May I entertain a motion from Dr. Tony Dudley, yes?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the uh current thing is we have a meeting in December and we skip the meeting in November.
Okay, got it. Skip the meeting in November and then we have a modified meeting in December was like the second week. Is that correct? Okay, so, okay, great. So uh would you like to make that a motion by Chair Dr. Tony Dudley? Okay, it's been moved by Vice Chair Dr. Tony Dudley to recess in November and have a modified meeting onto the second Wednesday in December. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Nick Ferrera. Is there any discussion from fellow board members? Hearing no discussion, is there any testimony from the community at large wishing to speak on this matter? Chair recognizes someone wishing to speak. Go right ahead, Logan.
Hey Chair, just clarifying. So you guys are only motioning to recess in November and planning to reschedule December?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yep. Anything else from in person, testimony or discussion from fellow board members?
Nothing in person.
Hearing none, the Chair's gonna call the vote. Um, is there any objections? Hearing no one wishing to object, the Chair calls it unanimous. It must move forward. Adoption of oral testimony rules. The current allowance of our oral testimony is a speaking limit of three minutes. Um, we can change that to any amount. May I entertain a motion to set the speaking limit for oral testimony?
The uh testimony at three minutes.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Tony Dudley to limit testimony at three minutes.
Second.
It's been seconded by Board Member Nick Ferrera. So any discussion or testimony from fellow uh from the public? Any discussion or members, any testimony from the, the public? Hearing none, the Chair will call for objections. Is there anyone wishing to object? Hearing none, the Chair calls it unanimous to uh continue with our current policy of limiting to three minutes. Now let's get to designation of board committees and committee chairs. The board um ha- has three committees, Parks and Recreation, Environmental Justice and Transportation. Um, does the board wish to continue these committees or to add new ones? Uh, the board chair is willing to entertain a motion at this time for this, the reestablish, I'm sorry, for continuing Parks and Recreation, Environmental Justice and Transportation or the creation of additional ones. Chair recognizes Board Member Mick Ferrer.
I'll move to maintain the status quo.
Okay, move to um continue um the three um committees. We have Parks and Recreation, Environmental Justice and Transportation. Is there a second? And um Board Member Munkahela seconds. Uh, is there any public testimony or discussion? Chair recognizes our board members, yes, granted.
Thank you. Uh, I can you just go over, I'm new to the board, so just go over these subcommittees, what we, what the roles are, what we, the expectation? Uh, because I would definitely be interested in an education committee or subcommittee if that's um, but I'm not really sure what these committees do.
Okay, um, great question. Um, so in short, uh, the committees are, are similar to board meetings in that they have to be agendized, they have to be noticed. Um, but what happens there is that it allows for focused discussion around community concerns under its topic heading. So Parks and Recreations in the past have held meetings to discuss all issues regarding our parks. So the things that you brought up here, they go in a deeper dive, all the way down to like dog parks and like restructuring new parks or or putting parks together. So uh it allows then, um, so what the committees um will do a deep dive and then they bring forward their recommendations to the full board after vetting out potential solutions. So that's the ask that I have as the Chair, is that whatever the community committees do, don't report back problems. Unless we're gonna report it back to direct somebody to do it, report back solutions. Like, what are you proposing we do and ask our electives to do? So we can have any types of committees. Uh, and um if you wanna, um, and uh another thing I'll say as a Chair is that we don't have to um establish the committee today and then if we don't do it today, uh, we can never do it. So if we wanna talk more offline about whether or not um things make sense within the current committees or outside of them, it's um, or if you wanna do education specific, um, which is not in any of their purviews, like we can always do that at the next board meeting or a subsequent board meeting. So we can add them when we need them. So it's one vehicle to do that, which is different than other vehicles like a permitted interaction group, which actually doesn't have to notice or provide an agenda. They actually get directed to go and find a particular solution, talk to whoever they gotta do to and come back and bring a recommendation, which is easier, but we also have to set that up. So there's different vehicles for us to um use the neighborhood board process for us to get our work done. As a forum for the community to advise our electors and our community members about um the needs of our community and opinions of what we want to see done. And um with that, uh, is there any follow-up questions on committees? And there, Kulianna? Okay, hearing none.
Do you want to make? Yeah.
Yeah, Chair, um, sees um order Mick for our first for discussion or question and okay, not, um, Chair goes to in person, Logan, um, who am I calling on?
Hey Chair, I was just letting you know that uh that mixed hand was up.
Gotcha. No worries. Um, so right now, uh, we're going to, we're in the process, the motion is to establish, I'm sorry, to uh to continue Parks and Recreation, Environmental Justice and Transportation. Um, and this is standalone. So if you wanna entertain any other committees, we can do that after this motion or in a future meeting. So, so let's handle those three right now. Uh, that would be my preference. And that's the recommendation from uh Neighborhood Board Commission is that we don't amend our motions. And to do subsidiary motions or second, second levels like amending the motions, basically cleaner for everybody to follow. So right now, uh, continuing discussion on continuing committees on Parks and Recreation, Environmental Justice and Transportation. Uh, Chair recognizes committee member and former board member, that's great for testimony, right there.
Uh, Chair, are you populating the committees and and uh specifying chairs at this time or does that come later?
Um, the question is, uh, we will populate them after we establish them and um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Thank you for your testimony and your inquiry. Any uh Board Member, Michaela Lindstone, yes?
Sorry, so, um, the motion is to have these three committees, but not the, the same chairs. Is that? Is it just? Like, is?
If I'm sorry, um, okay, that's a great question. Um, so I will.
Cause I read it, I'm sorry Chair, I read it as like status quo, same committee, same chair.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's a great question. That's absolutely what it is. Uh, Uncle Mick's motion was to status quo, so it's the same chairs. Um, so if you're currently a Chair and you don't wanna be the Chair, um, you probably wanna speak against the motion. Because you're gonna get.
No, I, I support this motion. Thank you. Just, just clarifying, mahalo.
But the population, we will handle afterwards. So we'll, we'll set the chairs now. And then whoever wants to serve on those committees after we establish the Chair and the Committee, I'll ask for the volunteers. We'll check with the committees and then we'll do it in a slate at one, one motion. Because we didn't have enough people clamoring for volunteers. Whoever wants to serve on the Committee, we will name you to that. And, and non-board members can serve on board committees. That's totally fine. Like Uncle Frank will be asked to serve on the Transportation Committee. A former board member, that's great, will be asked to serve on whichever committees he wants to. Because we still want our community members to participate. You know, yeah. Everyone clear on the motion? So we're voting on status quo, continuing the Environmental Justice Committee with Dr. Tony Dudley as Chair, Michaela Lindstone as Chair for Parks and Recreations and Nick Ferrer as Chair for Transportation. Any other testimony or discussion? Hearing none, I will do an affirmative vote on this one. Are there uh all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any say ole or no? Any abstentions, say kanalua? Hearing none, the Chair does call it unanimous. Okay, thank you. At this time, uh, I would like to see if um uh, the, the Chair would ask on the board members uh and the community at large if there are any recommendations for um those to sit on the Transportation Committee. Are there any nominations on to seat someone on the Transportation Committee? Chair recognizes uh community member, that's great. You wanna sit on the Transportation Committee? Or you wanna nominate someone? Okay, Dad wants to send Transportation Committee. Uncle Frank wants to sit on the uh nom- um, on the Transportation Committee. And uh you don't bother putting me on the Transportation Committee because the Chair is ex-official on all the committees. No need to waste time with my call. Um, Dr. Tony Dudley, yes, who would you like to nominate?
It's getting really late and uh I think maybe it would be good to hold the designation of the members until next week. And it's really not on the agenda for this week. So we, uh
Okay, um, Chair, um, appreciates the the input of Vice Chair Kenny Dudley. So um having that, um if there's any board member wishing to serve on any of the committees, please contact me via email. Any community member wishing to serve on any of the established committees, please contact me via email and then we will handle the seating of all of you uh at the next board meeting. Chair recognizes um Board Member Munkahela. Chair recognizes um board member Mukahela.
Sorry, it was a mistake, Chair. It was a mistake, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Um, let this time, um, the Chair is asking if we would like to establish any other committees. And the Chair. Yep, go right ahead.
I think we um would like to establish uh at least a discussion that's happening here a little bit aside, sorry. Would like to establish a, an education committee.
Okay, so um I could, would it be okay um for um board members to have a. Discussion of interest for the education committee to send um the uh email to let me know that you're interested. And if you're interested in chairing and who you want to be on your team that's not here. Because uh the whole point of the committee is to get people in that are experts or willing to do work with you. Great, and then we'll handle that at the next board meeting, recognizing that we'll put the education committee uh as a new committee um for the agenda. Now let's move forward with the approval of the regular meeting minutes from February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three and June twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. The minutes have been um distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes, may I please entertain a motion to adopt all of the minutes on the agenda? The Chair recognizes a board member that's great for testimony, right?
Uh, Chair, I noticed what might just be a typo with the dates in the uh printed agenda that I got emailed and I wasn't sure if that was an issue or not.
Okay, so um um for conformity, I will read off the minutes that uh we need to be approving, which is February twenty-third. Twenty-twenty-two, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, April twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three and June twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three. I believe that we uh just forgot to do the February twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two back in the day, which is uh just throughout it.
Thanks for catching that, bud.
Okay, um. Seeing um no one wishing to make any corrections, um entertain a motion to.
I'll move to accept.
Uh, adopt them. Okay, Nick Ferrer um moves to adopt um the minutes as as distributed. Um, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mukahela, um, any discussion or testimony? Hearing no discussion or testimony, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any kanaluwa or abstentions, hearing none, Chair calls it unanimous. We are um butting on our deadline, um, but I do want to see if the chairs of their committees. Have any reports at this time, starting with the Transportation Committee. Um, let's go, Uncle Mick.
Okay, um, I had recently contacted city and county about COVID registration amnesty. Uh, this would be to give people who had fallen behind on their registration um a break to be able to get current. Um, I had directed this to the mayor's office. Um, I got a canned letter from. The DMV Department that said, thank you for inquiring. We don't have any plans at this time to give registration amnesty. I haven't pursued it since. Um, the bill that. Uh, Senator Gabbard introduced for us, uh, you, uh. It's referring to using the shoulder lane during accidents and uh heavy traffic by motorcycles. Um, it made it through the committees, it's being carried over to next year. Um, so we may get some sort of movement there. Uh, Maka Kilo Drive, there was a meeting that uh Frank and I attended. With the mayor up at the Maka Kilo Community Center and a field trip showing him kinda where it's gonna be. Um, it sounded really positive, but I've only heard cricket since then. Uh, we haven't heard anything since. Uh, traffic calming with the state, uh, they're obviously doing a few things. Um, I've approached the um police department about DUI checkpoints and speed enforcement. And they just had a DUI checkpoint, I think, yesterday. Speed enforcement, they've had some officers up and down Maka Kilo Drive in different areas. Uh, they did have a radar trailer for about three weeks at the bottom of Maka Kilo Hill. Um, and then um I'm working on a future resolution for the um expanding the zip lane. And uh, other than that, I thank uh Thad Sprague for wanting to get involved in the Transportation Committee. That's all I got.
Mahalo for the report and mahalo for your continued good work and the amazing effort to be able to bring out mayor of. City and County of Honolulu to visually see where the Maka Kilo Drive extension should be. Cause it was promised to our community and that was a huge step. So congratulations to you, the committee, Uncle Frank, and all of the committees' work for making that happen. Okay, let's go now to Parks and Recreations Committee. Is there a report tonight?
No report.
Thank you. I'm going to the Environmental Justice Committee. Dr. Kelly Dudley, is there any report tonight that you'd like to make?
I'd like to say that uh I've been working on the uh one-hour TV show. Uh, we'd expect to finish that in August. I've got uh a editor uh working with me uh now. Uh, her name is uh Kareen. Uh, Makahiva Hiba and uh she's uh tremendous. I think that the the real advantage of our program, you know, there, there have been a couple of other programs that come out recently. Uh, on PITD, big, big one-hour program. You know, uh, the problem with those programs is they're lying to the people. They're not telling the people that all their houses are going to be destroyed. The big move is get fourteen days worth of food in your, in your refrigerator, you know? Uh, except that your refrigerator is gonna be inaccessible and you're gonna be dead. So uh, we. We're going to tell the truth and I think it's gonna be very powerful. And I, 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 I'm glad that these other things have come out so that we can see that uh, you know, the government really is still ignoring the facts. And not telling the people the truth. Thank you.
Mahalo, um, Dr. Kelly Dudley, um, Chair for the Environmental Justice Committee for your committees, uh, continued good work and your work. Um, from the time that we had that special engagement with disaster preparedness. And now moving towards the um information that you'll be putting out documentary about how to address the systemic issues. That's really going on that we are not prepared for as a state, as an island, as a district, as a neighborhood. Um, if and when, not if, but when um disaster strikes our communities. So thank you for your good work and um. And we look forward to seeing how we can support you um to continue to move it forward. With that, um, committee reports are finished and we're on to the announcements. Our next scheduled meeting for the Maka Kilo Kapole Honakai Hall neighborhood board number thirty-four is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. And all of the handles and reference materials concerning um the. Maka Kila Kapole Honakai Hall neighborhood board number thirty-four is found on our trusty Google Drive online. And the link is available online on any of the agents. My last announcement is for our newest board members. Please um do a reach out uh to myself, uh, if you have any questions. And I encourage you highly to join a committee so that you can learn from your fellow board members about um the. Distinct way that the neighborhood board gets to advocate. And with that, friends and family, we are now adjourned at ten P M, right on zon. Thank you all for coming and have a blessed month. We'll see you next time.